Crest County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. The record show today is May 7th, 2019. It is 9:00 AM. Ms. Jackie, would you do the honor in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's an honor, thank you.
Which Jackie?
Jackie, huh, uh...
Okay.
Go ahead Jackie.
No, she doesn't know the words.
I just...
I can, I can write it down for you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate that. Jeremy Handy told me his boy is in preschool and he has to memorize the Pledge of Allegiance. So the teacher gave it to him and the first sentence wasn't correct.
How could the first sentence not be correct?
So, I don't know, I didn't, he didn't go into that. Yeah, don't have him learn it wrong, that'd be...
That'd be bad.
Alright, good morning, welcome. Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll call please?
I would.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Canada.
There.
Commissioner Prince.
Yeah.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
Clerk to the Board Kelly Kemper, present.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda gentlemen?
Not that I...
I do not sir.
Nor do I, I have a couple items, I'll bring those up then. Commissioner Items, so, audience introductions.
Jackie Hobbie for the signal.
Jackie Hobbie, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, welcome. While we're in audience introductions, I would just ask if you can really come clean on how much money the Kentucky Derby cost you this year. Okay, good, we can move forward.
So how much did you lose?
Eleven thousand dollars. No, I'm teasing.
I brought my Kentucky Derby tie though.
Oh, okay, so we probably need to make notes, yes, very nice.
Jockey.
Uh, what number is that horse that won the race?
I can't remember, because it was the wrong one. Are you talking about the guy in yellow or the guy in pink?
Yellow.
I don't remember the name of it.
Attorney Smith of course knows the number of the winning horse, the silks on the winning horse.
Do I have a clue?
It was 11.
It was 20.
I thought it was 11, but I'm not sure.
It was 20 guys, yeah.
Well, he was in, what, fifth position or something?
Seven won it, got pulled down and the 20 horse ended up winning it.
Crazy, crazy.
Scandalous.
There'll be protests.
Scandalous, that's right.
Protester bounding.
I do not believe we have any minutes to approve today, so we will move on. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin?
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
On, we just met on the last day of April, so it's just a week ago, so I haven't been that busy, but on May 1st, I went to Pueblo and attended the SCAD Southern Color on Economic Development group meeting. The organization is in flux, but they have a new very strong chairman now and I feel very comfortable that they're getting their act together, we'll get our $2,000 worth.
For what was that again?
It's Southern Economic Development. It, they used, they're in flux, they've had major turnover, they've had lots of management issues. They have four or five outstanding loans that they've made to help companies go, two of those are non-performing, one is right on track, too late, and, but they have the money for that. They're gonna, it's not in their business plan in the future. Their business plan is to help communities with economic development and promote ways that we can meet. Nice thing is, in the group that we're in, it's multi-county and it's gonna be multi-county discussions and things like that. This was the business meeting, it wasn't really a meeting on how to run the organization, it was more where are our finances now, we met the new director who's great, the young lady came here and I don't remember her name, the new administrative director, she's a fireball and I really feel comfortable.
Was she the one that was here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna ask if that was a subset.
That's her.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's a subset, I get, I get it.
We're the lowest paid county, because it's by population, we do pay $2,000 towards the organization and I'm questioned whether it really made any sense or not since they were flux.
Well, they did help us with the grant writing, she did.
That's correct, and she has offered to do that anytime, even though we have a professional grant writer in the back there.
Get more.
She, she is happy to help us with any applications, grants, those kind of things.
Good.
I felt very comfortable with the meeting, I went in very skeptical, because I knew the issue that was going on.
Where was it?
It was in Pueblo, at their office, actually it wasn't at their office, it was at the Pueblo Community College, one of the buildings there. So that was pretty nice, and then on the 3rd, I attended the Tourism Board, not to the end, because I had to leave them, I wanted to leave for another commitment. That seemed to be, I think they got loud and clear message at the airport, you know, I thought that went a lot better than it had. And yesterday I attended the Beckwith Ranch Board Meeting and that, another organization in flux and lots and lots of questions there. I'd like to mention that, you know, I took on the job of overtime and comp, I just wanna give you an update that I'm working diligently on that, I don't have a solution yet, but I have lots of proposals that I'm working on, so, I haven't forgotten that, I just wanted to update you that I'm still in process.
Policy, easy, all overtime, no extra pay.
You know, and that may be the right thing to say on exempt employees.
Short and sweet.
I mean, really.
My definition, I believe that's what that means, but...
One of the questions I'm grappling with on an exempt employee, A, is comp time even available, or do we assume that your job, you may have to go fight a fire for 80 hours, but that's part of your position, or are you entitled to some of this? So those are the kind of questions I'm grappling with, and then the reporting is what I'm really working hard on. I really would like the direct reports to us to maintain the record of their employees, but they need to turn it in to somebody, whether it's me or it's to Ms. Hobbie, so that we keep a, a log and a record, and then the direct reports to us need to submit it to us, for us to review. So that's where I'm working on it right now, I, I don't have it finalized, but that's where my mind is going with this.
Cool.
So, that's what I've done since last week.
Mr. Canada.
Couple little things, the Tourism Board also didn't get to stay till the end, but it sounded like it ended okay. We'll hear more from you maybe, I hope. And, the OT6 guys did send the check finally, the 3,600 bucks that they, it was in the mail.
Say the amount again, sorry sir.
3,600, that was what we, the last billing from Armstrong was, that brings us all current with everything.
So that'll clean us up with Armstrong Engineering.
For now, yeah, and then the next phase is go into set of books. Also, I've got a new planned view of the, of the ramp area based upon the wingspan of the aircraft, which, it's a larger airplane than what we originally saw, so it's a little bit more ramp space that had to be worked in. And, also, I don't remember who asked, Tom, you brought it up on, somebody attended the last, it was the Blue Line meeting over at, it was a couple weeks ago, they wanted updated maps and Skanga, I asked him for them, because I was wanting to get the name of the USGS guy for that water balance study, alluvial storage thing that we saw, so we can present it at some point. So I got both of those, they, they sent me the maps, so who do I need to send it to? Do you want a copy?
Uh, yeah, I think we all, three need a copy of that, and then...
And then they...
I will forward that on.
And we probably ought to talk about how to, when to schedule a community meeting on, on that program, have the USGS guy actually present it like he did to us, it was a pretty good presentation. What the alluvial looks like underneath and...
Did Stumpert Arc have a feeling of they wanted to...
No.
They just forced it. Should we take that, or are we okay going straight to USGS?
We're okay, I asked for the contact info for him and we got that, so we can set up the way we want, when we want. We can invite them if they want to be there, maybe, might not be a bad idea to talk engineers, if the engineers get asked questions or whatever, we can talk about that later. But we ought to do that sooner or later, because we got a Water 101 class coming up, when is that, Thursday or...
Friday.
Friday. At 10:00 in Cliff Lanes for the day, is that's right?
Uh, no, it's at All Aboard West...
Or All Aboard West, Cliff Lanes is the dinner, yeah, All Aboard West, that starts at 8:00. And, that's all I know for now.
Okay, good, yeah, thanks for following up that map, then I'll have to remember who asked me to get a copy of those, might have been Matt Smith, but...
There were several, I'll forward it to you and we got it.
Yeah, good, thank you. Oh, let's see, I guess since the 1st of May, huh? I had a discussion, and maybe we can do that a little bit today during a report about a scraper out the landfill, we'll see if we, any traction there, but I met with Rusty last week and had a little conversation about that.
The commandeurs picked up and they were out there.
Yeah, I don't, I guess, I don't know if I reported this or not, that last weekend, I guess it was, lost track, I'm not allowed, I built a wall over in the VSO office that we had talked about, Board by consent agreed that, yeah, we ought to do that, give them some privacy. So it's built, we need to finish priming and painting it and installing the window, but other than that, it's, it's done, so...
Taped.
You might look at that, oh yeah, taped embedded, and I don't know that we'll texture it, but we'll look at it when we get ready, so. So I did that, May 1st, May 2nd, I had a meeting with Vic Barnes, Chairman of Planning and Zoning, to discuss, he asked, should they schedule another meeting and move forward, we just wanted to get a little traction there, so. I also met with Sheriff Byerly and had a discussion with him about the computer aided dispatch center in prep for our meeting on Thursday, which we can talk about that a little bit, I guess, too. I'm sorry, on Wednesday, tomorrow afternoon at 1:00, we have a workshop scheduled.
That reminds me, just real quick, because you brought it up, I did talk to Cindy about the leaks in the building over there, and it looks like it's gonna be something, it's pretty obvious where the latest leak is, that we could probably, we're gonna have to go find some handyman and get some bids on it and fix that or something, get it, does not, leak and make mold.
Center of Making and Spies guy over there, I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it since, so. And then, I also attended the Tourism Board Meeting, they changed their location now, they will be meeting in the basement of the West Cliff Town Hall.
I think we ought to take that over.
This was not a regularly scheduled meeting, they had to change their date because they had some conflicts, but anyway, I think that's gonna work out for them to meet there. Sunday, I attended the 32nd Annual Parent Member FFA Bank, was, was nice, with their new ag teacher over there. And then yesterday, I was out of county, but I participated in, if you can believe it, an 85-minute conference call with the water court referee, there were 36 people on the call representing 61 opposers, and primarily, we all went through and reaffirmed our positions and our reasons for being an opposer, and I read our reasons right off of our statement of opposition, so I didn't ad lib anything there. Told her that our position had not changed, that these were the areas of concern, that we were at this point not planning to hire experts as far as water engineering goes, but we would reserve the right to do that based on the report that is slated to come out at the end of May, and, let me check my notes, because I told her one other thing and I want to be accurate here. Oh, and that the dates, uh, there's, there's my notes from the conference call, so let me pull those dates out real quick. May, May 16th is the date, I believe, that the applicant has to provide a draft report, and then the opposers have until August 16th to respond in writing to those. Let me just double check that, May 20, August 21st is our next conference call, and...
What was 16, 16, August?
I think August 16th is, is the deadline to submit a written response to the draft plan.
The applicant does?
The applicant does a draft plan, yep. And then, the opposers have until August. There were 39 statements of opposition represented yesterday out of 62, or 39 on the conference call representing 62 opposers.
Are the 62 separate, or were they...
Oh, there's groups.
They are on groups of like...
Oh, two to five typically.
So there's then 39 actual object?
There was 39 people on the conference call yesterday. There were several that did not. So that was kind of the gist of that case, started, that call started at 9:45 and ended at 11:09, so, fairly lengthy. But she asked everyone on the conference call, those three questions, are the dates acceptable, what is your current position, has that changed from the statement of opposition? Well, the two dates is May 16th and August 22nd, so, she went through that with the whole bunch, and, a lot of legal speak for sure, because a lot of those people are being represented by attorneys, but I would guess a third of those opposers are pro se, so, certainly wasn't, you know, we're not one of the very few that are pro se opposers, there's a significant number. Question?
I'm not sure this is the appropriate time to talk about it, when we talk about the water update, but Bill, I heard that there's gonna be a meeting that you're involved in...
It's a Blue Line Committee.
Hang on, I didn't ask my question yet. That there's a meeting that you are involved in with local people to go talk about the Blue Line, and we signed a letter saying that we were opposed to that, so is this an individual thing?
Yes.
Okay, and what is it that you're doing?
It's the upper, it's the Wet Mountain Valley Water Users Issues.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All of issues, it's the revival of the old Wet Mountain Valley Water Board, for lack of another name. Anyway, we've got, the intent was to take the objection, anybody that has a, an objection that we're working, to make sure that we talk to the Blue Line guys, to have them understand what the issue really is, and not, and, and restate our objection to the filing and to the course that they're taking, and then to listen and talk about, let's, let's adjust it, let's stop it, let's pull it, let's do whatever we can without spending money.
I had heard rumor, and you know how rumors are, and it could be totally inappropriate, just wanted to get if you know anything about it, that, that the Opera Arc is considering withdrawing Crest County from the off plan, and then we could, because I'm 100% a favor of sitting down and talking to them, if, if, if that was to take place.
There, the only thing I know, that I hadn't, I hadn't heard that, is that they, they had, the Board itself, members of the Board are sympathetic, you know, their, their minds are different than they were in the beginning, they were objecting to how it was handled. And, but they still want to do a plan of some kind at some point, that's the intent here, if we, if, the meeting gets enough attendance and we get people there listening and we're, and we're having them understand why, and having proved that we're, the worst thing that happened in my mind was the statement that Terry Skanga made that said, well, we have to file before we know what the objections are, so that we can, we can get the engineering to go see what the impacts are. Well, not enough people filed, that's like, that's like Pelosi saying, we gotta pass the bill before we get, you know, before we can understand.
That's ridiculous.
So anyway, if, if they get working it and understanding it at the time and they see how convoluted it is, and the fact is, it's not a plan that augments real water into the valley, you know, there's no, there's no exchange being made, it's all on paper. Their second phase, they, they have a phase two of the plan, which is the whole valley, which was what they tried to file three years ago.
So this is first I'm hearing of that.
Yeah, no, they brought it up over there, that there's a phase two to the thing, that they should have just done the whole thing right in the first place, and that's our intent, I want to have, I want to get our guys together and have a pre-meeting to say, what, what is the intent, we want them to withdraw the darn thing.
Now, this is not a county sanctioned meeting, right?
No, it's, it's...
This is just a group going to talk.
People that are affected by it.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, you know, I think...
Because I don't want to pay money to go fight it on the next phase either.
I think the county will, and we already agreed to do that, up to $4,000 at least for our initial discussion, I think it's a week from today.
Yeah, we're gonna go to the Springs on Monday.
Right, Tuesday.
Oh, is it Tuesday, oh, it's 14. Anyway, they, I had heard that they were considering doing that, because they, they know it takes four years of process to process it anyway.
Well, my position is not changing, I just want to let you know, my position is this, if they remove us, and I, I know this is a little melodramatic, but take the knife out of my back, because I feel like I stabbed in the back, they did this behind our back, then I think we can sit down and work, because I agree with, I agree with you and I agree with them, an augmentation plan is something that is very necessary in this valley, I don't disagree with that one iota, it's necessary. Is this the right plan or not? I don't remember, we've never had a discussion to determine that, and that's, and that's what needs to take place before we'll put it in.
Yeah, we don't even know what the injuries are, period.
Well, we just don't know, but they went ahead and filed it without the engineering reports and without discussing it with us, I mean, I'm telling you...
So, so that was the point, when we talked, you know, talked to a lot of people, and the fact is, they should have been doing what we're doing now as a preliminary, like, here's what we're thinking about doing, why, here's where we proposing things, and that never occurred, so, this is a good opportunity now, because now they gotta listen, because they're, they also have to spend money to fight this thing.
I, I hope what they hear is, remove us from the plan and let's sit down, because they could always put us back in, this is gonna be a long-term process, once our ranchers, farmers, water writers holders, stakeholders in water, which was all of us, could say, I can live with this plan. Of course, you're never gonna get everybody to agree, I mean, like we never get everybody to agree when we make a decision, but the point is, we need to have input, and I, I don't know how to stress to them that that is the issue, in my mind.
Yep, and it is, and, and for sure, we don't want to just be sitting here waiting for somebody to take a court action then, we're, worst thing to do is to have them work it one-on-one with each individual objector, and that's what they were gonna do, because then they could adjust it, make him comfortable, but how does that impact the neighbor next to him?
You can't do it that way.
Can't do it that way.
I agree with you completely, okay, so I had heard about this meeting, and I just wanted, because we all agreed, we sent a letter to the, that, that...
You know, not...
We're not gonna, we're not gonna agree to a county sanctioned discussion until you remove us, and then we'll be happy to sit down and work something out if we can.
But I did tell you all I was gonna be doing that, you know, and I'm getting these people together, and I should, just blasted back the okay on it like Friday or whenever it was, and I should have brought it up just now, when I talked about the maps.
And that as well?
No, no, 29.
I'd like to pursue that, but I'd like to finish my portion of that.
I've got it.
So on May 6th...
That's why I asked if this was the right time to roll.
Well, you brought it up.
On May 6th, I attended the Friends of the Beckwith Ranch Board Meeting as well. Commissioner Prince is representing himself as an attorney, has nothing to do with the county commissioner deal, but he was at that meeting as well, appreciated that, your input's valuable. Last night, I also attended the Fairwood Meeting, they are waiting to get a preliminary report back on their economic development strategic plan for the long term. So that's, kind of concludes the calendar thing, I have a couple other items I wanted to bring up, and one of them was to discuss this expansion committee. Clearly, we have voted to not participate in that expansion committee meeting. Commissioner Canada, certainly you have a right to go as an individual if you want, I, I would object, you representing the county as a commissioner, and I think there's gonna be a very fine line, it's hard to separate, I think, in our positions when we're a commissioner and when we're not, so I'm concerned about that. I'm gonna go to that meeting for that very reason, because I want to make sure they understand that we have no part of the expansion committee.
I have no uncertain terms.
Can I finish sir? If private citizens want to go up there, that's their business, but we clearly indicated to other parties that we will not be part and parcel to that expansion Blue Line Committee, so, I, I would guess my concern is that you end up going up there as a commissioner. Now, if you're telling us that's not the case, then I will take you at your word.
That's what it is, period.
And then I wanted to bring up, at least start the conversation, obviously, the Clerk to the Planning and Zoning has tendered her resignation effective June 31st, so we're gonna be finding ourselves in a position to move forward with seeking, I'm assuming, that's why I asked Ms. Jackie, you said you and I would like to ask her comment on this, but to move forward about finding a replacement for Ms. French, Mrs. French, when time is appropriate, so, I'm assuming you believe you need a replacement, you're not ready to take that office on all by yourself?
No.
But she's been training me.
But he's living...
She's been training a lot of people.
And he's a lawyer, I can't have him on the phone. But I would, I had a couple suggestions, I would, we need to replace that person as soon as we can, because Elizabeth will, it will be here till the end of June to train that person.
Okay, so there is a transition period built into this?
Yes, I'm hoping that usually an ad, a help wanted ad runs for two weeks in the newspaper. I'm hoping to get that ad buttoned up and fit into the next, and then I don't know how, it's typically done, if you pick the top three or the top five people that applied and interview them, or, so we need to do that, and then the pay.
Okay, so I would assume, as we've done in the past, we would convene as a Board of County Commissioners, interview those candidates, I would assume you would want to be part of that process, since it's your office.
Definitely.
So, from my perspective, the three of us and yourself could conduct those interviews, I would probably ask Ms. Hobbie to set in on those, as she has in the past, and then we can, we can't get hung up on how many numbers we're gonna interview, because we have no idea how many candidates we're gonna have, but...
How much time do we have?
I'd like to do it as soon as possible. I'm beginning, yeah, two weeks in the newspaper, the third week start interviewing them, because I need Elizabeth to, because in the meantime, I'm running in and out on my inspections also, so in the meantime, I need her to start training the new person.
So, she want to be out effective the end of the month, is that what you want?
End of June.
Oh, the end of June.
But if you figure that you've already wasted three weeks.
So by consent gentlemen, would you agree with charging Mrs. Hobbie to start drafting a, Jackie Hobbie, drafting a vacancy notice, let's not call it an ad, a vacancy notice to go in the paper for a couple weeks?
Absolutely, I sent her an email yesterday, suggesting she start getting that process done, because I knew this was a, get this thing moving quickly.
You okay with that?
Yes, what about, what I would like to be able to do with vacancy ad, help wanted, is to be able to put a dollar amount.
Talk to Donna Hobbie about that and look at our, get a window.
Well, I took the, took it from JD's ad, because I think that that would probably be, my payout for Elizabeth's not gonna be huge.
Well, I think the commissioners are gonna have to set the pace down.
Yeah, we gotta look at that.
Because we don't have one, so we're gonna have to deal with that, now is not the appropriate time, but we'll get to that. If you gentlemen are willing, we can stick that on the agenda for tomorrow, and have a discussion about setting the pay scale. discussion about setting the pay scale.
And in the meantime, I'll talk to Donna.
How much time we got tomorrow?
No.
What else do we have?
Can I ask kind of a difficult question? And I don't mean this in a negative way, but Ms. French retired once before and then retracted it not long ago. I hate for the county to put out money if that's going to happen again. Do you think that, does it?
No, because the last time we didn't have a letter, this time we have a letter.
So, you feel comfortable that we should go ahead and expend our, expend resources to do that? Okay, that's great. I didn't mean, I didn't mean that in a negative way.
So, gentlemen, with your consent, I would ask Ms. Meredith to put on the agenda for tomorrow, consideration of Mrs. French's letter of resignation. We can make that formal if that's what the board chooses to do. And also discussion of salary.
That'd be fine, but you're going to need to bring us a, like a list of things, requirements for the position, like she administers the septic tests for the contractor.
Oh, I already got that.
You've got all that laid out because.
In Donna's office in HR is the job description.
So, we'll need that in order to figure out what kind of skills and what that pay scale might, you know, it impacts the pay.
I, well, and I.
That's going to be hard to train somebody to do some things.
I agree with that, but also it's already written because we already have a job description and the, I hate to jump the gun, but I already got to help wanted.
But she, she's not doing things that have evolved that aren't written down is really my question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, maybe things have evolved, but they are written down because we keep track of everything.
So, you're working on the vacancy announcement currently?
Well, I like to call it an ad.
I know you do.
Let's have Mr. Smith decide which one.
I'm sure we'd refer to it as a vacancy announcement, but let's ask him.
Do you like my word?
So, if I may move on then, thank you. So, we're, we're on the agenda for tomorrow, correct? New business. Okay, thank you.
Can we put it a definite time so we get to 24 hours in?
Yeah, 10 o'clock. Well, let's do it 10:30 because it'd be after.
There's all the staff reports.
Yeah, let's do 11:00.
Make it 11:00.
Thank you, sir.
Time to save.
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. Okay, good. And then my final thing is, and I'll defer to Attorney Smith if it's something you want to bring up during your attorney report on the lease agreement. So, if you're prepared to do that, then I will take it out of mine. Thank you, sir. Okay, that's all I have. Anything else, gentlemen, under Commissioner items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Attorney items?
Do you want to do the?
I'm sorry.
Upper Arc.
Yeah, I guess I kind of jumped the gun on that with the report on the, on the conference round. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot to report. Certainly, there's a meeting coming up. I will attend that as usual. And I thought about drafting a statement, gentlemen, I do have a concern about the previous Blue Line Expansion Committee meeting they had in, in Salida. Did you attend that? Okay. I did not. I've got the recording of the entire meeting here.
We had a board meeting.
That's correct. That's right. And so, I asked somebody to record that meeting. I've got it on jump drive right here. I haven't listened to the entire recording yet, but it's my understanding, and I've talked to Bill Donnelly, one of the seated board members, and he was told that one of the seated commissioners was asked to leave the executive session of the Blue Line Expansion Committee, not according to the information I got.
I put Meyer.
So, maybe.
Us commissioners?
No, Water Commission.
They're not sitting in an executive session.
Director.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So, one of upper arc directors was asked to leave the executive session. So, I thought about drafting a letter as ex-official member and presenting it to the board. Number one, I, I do not believe committees have executive powers that enable them to go into executive session. If that's the case, they certainly did not have the right to exclude somebody from that, but.
So, they had their Blue Line meeting in an executive session?
No, they had a Blue Line Expansion Committee meeting and towards the end of that, they adjourned into an executive session and then asked Jeff Olenger to leave. So, I'm struggling with that. I would like to bring that up to the upper arc board on Thursday if you gentlemen, I'm not going to speak on our behalf unless we have a conversation about it ahead of time, so.
I think they must have asked more because Randy Russ told me that they had excused Cole and Manny too.
So, if you guys are okay, I would certainly ask those questions. Go ahead, sir.
I feel very comfortable with you representing the board, us, representing the commissioners, representing me. I'm not going to put anybody else and certainly bring up those issues about executive sessions behind the back, sneaking behind, how they operate in general.
Yeah.
I agree, if you want my.
Bill Donnelly was very adamant that he didn't ask Olenger not to, asked him to actually get up and walk out of the room because they knew he was opposing the Blue Line.
Isn't that just weird? They excluded him to have their discussion.
Rich, on the surface, he was not a part of that committee. He is not on the Blue Line Expansion Committee. So, I understand that, that he was not part of the committee.
Is it a record?
But he is a seated board member and I'm not sure they have the authority of the committee to exclude somebody from executive session. And I personally question the validity of that. I just don't believe they have the powers of that. I was going to contact Attorney Smith and ask him to kind of dig into that. I've dug into that. Well, the problem is, upper arc will be the first one to say, oh, we don't abide by Robert's Rules of Orders. Parliamentary law does not apply to us. Already been told that.
What law does apply to that?
So, what law does apply then?
Sunshine law does.
Yeah, open meetings.
And I believe a committee meeting, I don't believe they have the power to go into executive session. I think they have to conduct their meetings in public. The seated board, of course, has those executive powers, but I'm not sure about a committee.
There's only four ways when a seated board can go into an executive session. So, I mean, even if they felt they could, it has, under the sunshine law, there's only four ways you could do this.
I think that's really the big deal.
Colorado statute.
Sense.
Personnel.
Yep. Attorney advice.
Personnel policy, or, yeah, confidentiality and lawsuit.
And they can't go in and make complaints, for sure.
The last one is if there's an unfair advantage. For example, if you're going to talk about contracts, you want to do it in an open situation because someone may want to outbid someone else. That's acceptable. Those are the four. And that's it. You can't do it for anything else.
So, I would like to challenge them on those premises if that's reasonable and I can draft that in a letter today and shoot you a document. But I don't want to go up there and start ad-libbing. That's very risky. I want to represent this commissioner, board of commissioners in a specific manner. So, I will shoot you a document today.
Turn that off.
Do you have the tape or the recording?
I've got it, yes.
And have you listened to where they went into?
No.
Because that would be, what verbiage did they use? Did they use the proper verbiage? Even if the committee can't do that, if they didn't even do that, then that would be.
Yeah, I would think if they had a legitimate reason in the board meeting, in a board meeting, they requested executive session with the committee for one of those four reasons, that's different. But I can guarantee you that.
That's not what.
Because there wasn't a board meeting, it was a committee meeting. Yeah, I will listen to that before I draft that letter and serve it before Thursday. I started to listen to it, got interrupted. At that time, I didn't know they'd gone into executive session either. So, I, the day I listened to it, I got a phone call and said, did you get to the point where they went into executive session? I said, no, I haven't listened.
See, that was just a committee Blue Line meeting, right? It was not a board meeting.
It's a sub, it's not a subcommittee, it is a committee.
Committee of the board of directors.
So, I have some concerns about that. But anyway, so that would be my report for upper arc. Attorney items?
Okay, as usual, I worked with Jackie since the last time we met. This time, she had a letter requesting a subdivision waiver for a subdivision near Wetmore. They wanted a waiver to drill additional wells and we talked about it. I wrote a letter for my signature explaining the procedure that they needed to go to the Planning Commission on it first before there would be any consideration by the board of county commissioners.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
And that directive you gave them is more of a process thing, that's not a law, correct? They have the right to come straight to the commissioners if they wanted to.
I guess they could explain that the procedure would be for them, they made the request and have the Planning Commission do its investigation and recommendation and then you would make a decision on it. I sent a letter to Lisa Drew, the director, executive director of the Custafany Medical Center, advising her that the county did desire to terminate its lease agreement to lease space there at that building for our public health agency. And I sent a copy of that, you all saw it, and telling her that we were, we would guarantee that we would be able to be out by the end of May. I haven't had any response. She may not have gotten that letter until yesterday because it went in the mail on Friday. But I'm assuming she has it now for sure, but I haven't heard any response from her.
You sent it by snail mail?
Just regular mail, yes.
Or had you go to Canada first?
Yeah, pretty much had to go to Canada and not just take it from.
It probably won't get there tomorrow.
Okay, well, we'll see, but if, when I hear something from her and I have no idea if there's any problem there or not, she, I am aware that she's agreeable for us terminating the lease. I think she believed it was going to take us longer to get out. But as long as she understands we can definitely be out and the premises can be theirs, I don't know whether we'll have a problem with that or not. Donna Hobby asked me to review a contract for the lease purchase agreement of that brand-new, very expensive truck that Rusty got. And I looked that over. I did have a couple of questions about it. There was no warranty provision.
Yeah, do you have a reference of what that, what number that was in the?
I think it was like number 20.
Okay, thank you.
And I just said that.
Yeah, disclaimer of warranties, yeah.
Some question about that since it's a brand-new vehicle. And also, there was a provision in there where we, the county, would be giving a power of attorney to the agency. It's for some pretty.
Obscure.
Yeah, and I, it's, I don't know that there's really a problem with it, but I think as a legal matter, you can delegate your authority to do things like that, even a very simple power of attorney.
Do things like what?
This is Paul Reba trying to.
Grant power of attorney.
To sign some paperwork regarding the title and everything for us. So, I'd like to see, I just would like to get an answer back on some of those things. We may have to tell Rusty he can't drive that truck in the meantime and find him some junk vehicle.
You know, I, did you have a question, sir? Or comment? I was just about to interrupt you if you did.
No, it's all right. Go ahead. I was going to add something about Lisa Drew, but we've kind of passed that.
Um, we can go back to that if you care to, but this disclaimer of the warranties, I see that's all in caps. The rest of that entire contract is in lowercase. I wondered if they didn't insert that because they knew the purpose of this vehicle and they were worried about it being a landfill use vehicle because they do talk about the design, the condition, the merchantability or the fitness of the particular purpose or fitness of the use of the equipment.
Rusty's driving record too. I knew he'd come in eventually.
Well, the only, only thought I'd have on that is they, it's a lease, they own the vehicle, so the mortgage through the owner, maybe I.
But we're responsible for all the maintenance and everything.
We're responsible for maintenance, but if a part fails, that manufacturer has a five-year warranty on drive training.
I, I just don't like the language of it. I wanted some kind of clarification on it. So, I'll see what she finds out. And the main thing, of course, is that we got, got the contract, proposed contract from Riley Johnson Architects, Bob Johnson, Robert Johnson, he goes by Bob, sent it to me and I forwarded copies to you. And I looked at it and Shannon reviewed it and had a number of thoughts. My suggestion would be that maybe we have a workshop on this to go over this contract and discuss it. And Shannon was uncomfortable being the point of contact going on from this point. He's the head of the committee. But my feeling is that perhaps one of you should be the point of contact on this. And I don't know if any of you have had any experience handling major contracts in your private capacity? Maybe Bill did just a little bit. But I, I think one of you should probably be the point of contact from this point on. So, I'd like to discuss this and get your input on, get Shannon's input and maybe some of the members of the committee who have had experience in this area also get their input because it's not something I've ever really handled.
Well, the committee's certainly wondering what their, what their next.
And Shannon's anxious to get this agreement done so they can get started on their, doing all their interviews and studies and everything they need to do to come up with a, you know, a.
So, the ball right now is in our court, right? We have the contract and we're waiting to sign it and send it back to them.
Right.
Okay. Gentlemen, what's your feelings?
I think we ought to have a look. I like the idea of that. Let's get a my eyes on the contract.
Okay. And invite the committee as part of that?
I think so. I especially appreciate Shannon's work on his comments. I read the contract myself and he picked up a lot of things I didn't see.
May 15th, how's that look? Or the 16th?
Uh, I can't leave. I'm, I'm not going to be here for the 15th, 16th and 17th. 20th, we could do it.
So, Monday?
Do it then.
By consent, shall we schedule a workshop? Gentlemen, pick a time if you would, please.
Well, let's, uh.
When, in the morning?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. So, let's call that a Justice Center Contract Workshop.
Yeah, I can do that. I got a 12:30.
You on board back there, Ms. Meredith? Okay, Justice Center Contract Workshop, 9:00 AM, Commissioner's Room and/or courtroom, depending on availability. Mr. Candid, that date work for you?
Yeah. It would be me at 12:30 if we can get down before.
Well, I would think so, yeah. Shouldn't be a problem.
I hope so.
Yeah. I will check with the courtroom. If it's not available, I believe we can have it in here just fine. The entire committee?
I would invite the entire committee.
I think Shannon has distributed this to them all now, so they've had a chance to hear it.
I'll communicate this with Sheriff Byerly as well.
Entire committee's worked so hard to get us to this point. I don't see any reason they should not have their voice nailed to it.
Anything else there on the contract, lease purchase agreement?
Uh, not on any of that. Just a reminder, then I did arrange the meeting with the water law attorney for a week from today on.
Yes.
May 14th at 10:00 at his office. He did want your, your written questions or, you know, issues. I got that from Jay already.
Okay, and I have not submitted mine yet.
If you'll, you'll send it to me, I'll forward everything to you.
And so, there's not a lot of duplication of thought and effort. Could we forward that and we can all share ours, or at least when we get ready to write our questions, we can say, oh, I'm not asking.
I just sent mine to Clint, but I'll be happy.
Which is what we agree to do.
I'll forward it to you.
Then we can review those and there are no sense of all us putting on the same.
You're probably going to say, what great questions.
Yeah, what, what great questions. I wish I'd have thought of that.
Are the, I don't know if you've talked about it, three of you contemplating going up together for this meeting. I'm going to go up.
I thought if you were okay with it, we'd all four go together and I'd take my pickup.
Well, I was going to take my onboard as well. Well, I was gonna take my, I was like, a chance.
I get the backseat. Where are you riding?
I'm the driver.
Oh, you're the driver. We haven't had that conversation.
Given that the weather is not good, then I'll, I'll say we'd be happy to go with you.
Well, I will drive regardless, depending on, then we'll at least know we have a plan for that. Gentlemen, what's your thoughts about the meeting up there in Colorado Springs?
I'm fine if we go together. I, I mean, I think there's a, the perception is, you know, that we're gonna, we may violate Shan Shanwa, but I think we have proven over and over again that we're very careful about that. I think it's a waste of county resources to pay for three trips or four trips up there when they can pay for one. And we'll just be careful to make sure we don't discuss.
Can you, your thoughts?
That's on which day is it?
14th.
Yeah.
So I would bump into the guy and we leave here at eight. Do you have an address for their office, sir?
I don't have it here, but I will send.
You forward that to me and I would recommend we probably leave here at 8:00. That puts us in there at 9:30. So. It's a nice thing about it, whoever drives doesn't have to buy lunch. Okay. No, that's, that's pretty well standard procedure and policy.
It's in Robert's rules, I think.
Oh, yeah.
As long as it's not more than $50 for his lunch.
Well, yeah, my lunch, I'll keep it under 50. Yeah, yeah. Anything else, sir, before we go back to clinic?
No, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Prince had a question about.
I do.
As do I, actually.
Hopefully it's not an issue for me even to discuss this. But it appeared to me that Ms. Drew's response to us seemed to indicate she was gonna hold us to three months.
Well, the way I read it, I think that she was kind of assuming we needed that much time to get out, to get another place and get it ready. I, I hope that when she gets my letter that says we can be out in 30 days, it won't be an issue. If it is, I'll, I'll discuss with her. That would probably be best for all of us if we just get this over with as soon as we can.
All right, and we're gonna have some discussion about this later on because it's on the agenda.
You did make a pretty bodacious statement about how clean it was gonna be.
Well, yeah, it's not my problem.
You're sure to lay in your line.
We've gotta crack clean instead of take care of that.
So we can, we can address that again. Mrs. Lavengut will be here too, so I've got some other comments, but I'll hold them about that and we can discuss it then. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Admin assistance items. Want to publicly thank Ms. Meredith for taking the lead on reorganizing our conference room. I think it looks very professional and welcoming and I certainly feel good about it. I came to work one morning and she happened to catch me down by the, well, outside the door here and said, stop right there. You need to understand that we talked about reorganizing the room and it was in a total state of chaos and disaster.
We had to make room for the bookshelf, so everything was.
Yeah, this table was up on top of her desk. But thank you very much, Meredith. Looks great and I'm proud of it and I know you are and we'll press on. I've got a, an idea I'd like to run by you because I certainly would never do it without the discussion of the board first. But I'd like to look into building a new conference table in basically an abbreviated C shape with these being at an angle so you gentlemen could look at each other rather than try to look through me and then we would have, Clint would sit about where he's at, but he would be on a conference table, not a government reject typewriter table.
I'd like to.
And Kelly would be slid down a little bit as well.
I mean, he's, pretty soon we're not gonna have any chairs.
Yeah, with your permission, I'd like to pursue that. I certainly won't expend any dollars without coming to the board first, but.
I haven't asserted, but it makes sense.
I had a rough draft drawing of that, but that's the idea, that we would kind of get this where you guys could have a little more interaction and.
Instead of looking at your earlobe.
Right. That's my motivator is I just don't like this sliding back and forth. I feel like I'm.
Yeah, and I do that too.
So.
It is hard.
I'm hoping it won't cost us anything, but.
The price sets it right.
Yeah. So anyway, I'll pursue that if that's okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Meredith, thanks for your work. Public comment. Good morning, ma'am. How are you?
Hi.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Helen Burton. I've lived in the West Cliff area since May 1, 2016.
No, nice.
Do I sit here and present or do I sit there?
Well, that is up to you. If you'd like to come forward on public comment, you can. You can certainly sit there. That's acceptable. But most people do in, in public comment, but.
Oh, I didn't. It's not my turn yet.
Oh, okay.
It's not my turn yet.
Is there a, is there a turn for on the?
She's here for the, the, um, sell of the loans. For the Golden Valley.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, you're on the agenda, so you're fine. We'll bring you up in a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
If you had another comment or anything.
Other public comments about anything, we would certainly be willing to listen. Okay, thank you. If not, we will move on then. We've got five staff reports. Helen, correct? Is that all right?
Certainly.
Okay.
I'm here to learn and see how things go.
All right, so, so we have five staff reports. We'll go through those, then we're, I don't believe we have any unfinished business today. Then we'll go into new business and you're first on the new business, so we'll.
Just tell me when.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Nice to have you here too. Thank you. Uh, Roden, or landfill, by golly. Shall I?
Or by Rusty.
Oh, Rusty, is that the name we're going by?
Whatever you choose.
Well. Not everybody calls you Rusty. I didn't know what your nickname was from the old days.
Oh.
Yeah, that's where I'm headed with that.
Let's see.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good. How is it?
Fine and dandy, I believe.
Good.
Except for Caterpillar told me that they had a scraper available and it was gonna be delivered on the 1st of May. Well, it turns out the scraper was in New Mexico. And it turns out that it was in a shop and it was getting worked on and as soon as it was fixed, it was going back to the customer that.
And had we found all that out?
Finally got.
Truck driver.
Yeah, truck driver. I had to call the truck driver and he said that he called Cat and told them, well, Caterpillar never called me and let me know. So I'm waiting for it out there all day. So, long story short, we'll have no scraper until they find another one somewhere.
So Rusty and I had this conversation and as I understand it now, the truck driver drove to New Mexico to get it.
He was in New Mexico.
He was in New Mexico. Okay, all right. So I said, well, would there be a possibility we'd get a local scraper? Now that we know there are local scrapers, because we rented one or we hired one. And he said, hmm, well, we had that conversation, so. I haven't done anything about that since our conversation. I was gonna wait till today, so. I, personally, I think that would be a good idea to ask Rusty to reach out to our local contractors and see if anybody's interested in doing that.
And you mean renting it as opposed to have Rusty, Rusty or have them do it?
Yes.
See what the comments is.
Who did we end up hiring for the airport?
Cypher.
Cypher, so, and we're talking 500, 600 feet of that trench left to be excavated.
Right, right.
If you were doing it full-time with a decent scraper, how much time do you think that would consume?
To open the rest of it up, it would be a couple of months probably.
Full-time, that, that's not an.
For me.
No, no, if we hired it done.
Probably.
You think they could do it in a month?
Well, I don't know.
Depends if they can get it.
I don't know. That's, that's a lot of material to move.
What if we went to them and said, could you give us a bid on opening this trench, whether it's one scraper or four scrapers?
Yeah, yeah, that's what you'd have to do, I'm sure.
And we have to reclaim the top soil. We have to reclaim the three feet of clay, two feet of clay.
Yeah, whatever works out. Usually two, two and a half feet.
The rest of its ways.
The more, the better because we need it to cap those pits with.
I'd sure like to see us move in that direction, at least to look while we're waiting to see.
Get a bid and see what it is.
I mean, Cat could call in tomorrow and say, we got your scraper. When do you want it? But.
But here's the thing. Let me give you an example here. The cost out there at the airport was like 76,000 bucks for the 29 ton or a yard, 29,000 yards. And that was, you, we gotta bounce that cost and then they used a dozer pushing it and, you know, that's how they did it, did it, did it in two, two weeks.
Is this in your budget?
That's what, that's where I'm getting to. So now the next thing is Rust, the rent on one of these babies is like 6,000 bucks a month, wasn't it?
Uh, scraper for a month was 22,000.
22,000, I think. Yeah, six weeks, so plus three times expense maybe. And how many, you don't know how many thousand yards in it.
I was gonna figure that real quick. So we're at 600 feet roughly?
Yeah, you could say 600.
And then the average width is gonna be 50 feet, 55 feet?
Average, probably 50, because you're 35 whatever at the bottom.
We'll just say 60 feet wide on the average. Because 100 feet, the top, what, third of that trench is gonna be over 60 feet, right, probably?
Top of the trench is 100.
Right, so maybe 60.
20 feet deep.
Times 20, divided by 27, so that's 133,000 dollars.
So that's, uh.
About twice what we're reporting.
Yeah, see, and when I talked to them, when I talked to them a few years back, well, quite a few years back, they wanted $2 a cubic yard.
They being.
Cyber, yeah.
Would you mind reaching out to them and asking them?
Yeah, I'll talk to them about it.
Figures?
Sure.
Uh, yes, sir.
Where's the money coming from?
Well, you have it in your budget to finish, to rent a scraper.
I have 22,000 for the scraper.
You have times.
For one month.
Right.
But it's gonna, but we're thinking it's gonna be excess of that. It's gonna be more.
If, if a private contractor does that job, it's gonna be a lot more.
It's gonna be four times or roughly three times according to.
That's something you've done before, isn't it?
Yes.
I can remember that.
He's done them all.
Yeah, so.
My thought was to get the information so we can make an informed decision. That was it.
And that is a wonderful suggestion.
Don't have any buy-in one way or the other. I just thought if we're hung up now on not finding a scraper.
Got it.
And we're gonna need one here.
I think one of the bids on the airport was 120,000, so it'd vary.
Yeah. So if you could reach out to them, that'd be great.
Yeah.
You're saying it's gonna be four times more. That's true, but we're probably six times or eight times more in materials, so we'll just have to see. And if the money's not there, then we go back and do what we can afford to do.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But that didn't mean we couldn't take that 22,000 and, and hire somebody to do $22,000 worth of work.
I'm fine with that. I was just curious. I was wondering, I'm good. I was misunderstanding.
So Rusty, what's the time crunch? When do you have to get started on it, if we're to go lease one?
May 1st.
Yeah.
Um, we're okay. You know, I just would rather have it this time of year before it gets real busy in June, July, August. And because it gets pretty congested out there and I'm running that big machine around, I just really don't like that. But whatever works out, if we can get one, I know there's a lot of construction going on and everybody rents scrapers. All these private contractors, they all rent these scrapers and so it's gonna be hard to find one, but they will find one.
Right.
Whether it be in Colorado, New Mexico, wherever.
You know, back to a conversation we had earlier, obviously Rusty's an exempt employee. We're not asking him, but I know he's done it, spent hours in the seat of that scraper. That's not right. It's not fair. I've never driven a scraper, but I've certainly pushed a scraper with a dozer and it's a brutal job. So I don't think we can just sit here and go idly, say, well, yeah, I rent a scraper and you run it. That, that would be like asking any other employee to do another three-quarter time job on top of what they're already doing too. So I think it merits looking into for sure.
Yeah, I'll get ahold of him and see.
Good, good, good. Okay? CD-PHE?
Uh, no impact on the second sampling of the wells. It's a great thing and so they won't do that again for five years.
And that should help us with a permitting as we go forward.
Right, right. And depending on, you know, there's some different things you can do out there at that landfill. The pit that we just finished, close to the Rosita Road and the one that we're in right now, before we cap those, we could get a waiver, you know, you could build trash up on top of those and make mountains, actually, instead of capping them at ground level like they are now.
That's what they do on other pits.
Sure. You know, and the expansion is gonna be very expensive. I know it is, but that would give it the county time.
Probably another five years.
Yeah, to come up with some, some funding for that expansion.
Back to closed pits and do that?
Yeah. Yeah, instead of capping them with that four feet of material, then you could just go up with trash. The only problem with that is the wind, but you could build some fencing.
Kind of similar.
To stop it.
Fencing. Uh, I stopped out there, I've probably been two weeks ago now, I guess, and Rusty and I drove around the landfill. I mean, it's just amazing how clean and well-organized that place is and I commend you for that. I've gone by the landfills and you could see it before you ever get there. I-40 west of Albuquerque is a great example. You know there's a landfill 20 miles before you ever get to that turnoff.
Yeah, these guys spend a lot of time out there picking stuff up.
Yeah, so job well done there. And I thought, you know, if we have these two pits, could we do that, actually use that center to start with between two seal pits like Rusty's talking about? One of the things it would do, it would give us some road block view to block that view of a landfill. If you have a berm up there, basically is what it would end up being, but.
Yeah, depending on how high you wanna go up, you could go up five feet with trash, six, seven, eight feet, whatever, however, how you wanna go.
How high is a typical lift in those pits? Probably five, six feet?
Well, I like to keep them low. You get better compaction if they're about two feet.
Too small.
So if we were going above ground, stay on that same thing and then maybe go three lifts?
Yeah.
Which would buy, probably buy us on a full length of a pit four or five years?
I'll bet.
I think we oughta look into it.
That might be something, when we get that proposal from the engineers and look at it and then make a decision on.
I mean, how much time we got to save money to do it.
What's the distance between the two pits parallel?
20 feet.
10 feet. We really couldn't dig down between those and gain another five or 10 feet probably, huh?
No. No, they want those, in between those pits for water, for drainage, stormwater. But before we, you know, before we cap those pits, I think we should probably look at that. It'd buy us, buy us some time.
Material just to cap the pits, isn't it?
Yeah.
A lot of time and material, so if we could avoid that.
Right.
One of them's already capped, the south one, correct? Or is, yeah, the south one's capped.
Yeah, there's three that are.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the south.
And you could actually take the material off of those, I believe.
Take lettuce.
Take the material off of those and then fill the trash up and then put that material back on. So there's, so there's some different things that the county can do, so.
So back to the scraper. Is Cat the only outfit you're dealing with?
Yeah.
Asking? Is there any reason why you wouldn't ask in parallel somebody else or we get better?
John Deere doesn't have elevated scrapers.
I know they don't.
And they're the closest. And it's, you know, to make it a one-man job, you need an elevated scraper so you can just load, go dump. Load, go dump. You don't have to have a dozer pushing the other.
You gotta have a self-propelled.
Well, if you would continue to look into that.
I will.
Okay.
I will do that.
Okay, yes, sir.
I can ask just two questions. First of all, in your court, SWANA, what does that stand, what is that?
SWANA is Solid Waste Association of North America.
Thank you.
Good job, bud.
I feel like I'm talking over.
That's right, you remember.
Good job.
Good, good job. And the other one is, just testing that every day. How often do they pick up those bales of cardboard that you have?
Right now, we could, we could do a load right now, but the, the price is so low and nobody wants to haul it.
Got it. So it's, it's a management decision at this point. That's fine. I was just curious.
Yeah, and I wished we could get a truck, but nobody, nobody's available to haul it because the price is down so low that nobody's willing to haul it off. And the paper mills, I imagine they're open again. They were closed for a while, so.
And of course, we're waiting with bated breath to find out about our grant.
Right. And that should be this week, right, Meredith?
Yes, this week.
So.
This crosses.
That would be huge, 34 grand. I'm not gonna sneeze at that.
Be wonderful, yeah. That would be a great thing.
And your traffic counts. 14, there we go.
See, we just started in this new trench in February. We've already put 4,000 some cubic yards in there. It's only May.
Yeah, and it's interesting. I mean, you look at the numbers, January, well, that was commercial yard, so that's not really fair. Yeah. And it's interesting. I mean, you look at the numbers, January, well, that was commercial, uh, yard, so that's not really fair. Cubic yards is everything, the fourth, fifth column.
Right.
Yeah. So from eleven-thirty to eleven-forty-six to fourteen-sixty. So we're building momentum as the weather improves, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
And the same with commercial, it's going up.
Right.
So maybe it's like spring cleaning coming up.
Yeah, and you know, we did not really touch base with you, Rusty, and I apologize for that when we voted to waive the landfill fee. That was very short-sighted on our part. Now that I think about it, we should have talked to Rusty about that.
That usually goes real smooth. I mean, we've never really had any, any problems with that.
Because we did approve both waivers for the towns of Silver Cliff and.
Right. So that's, that's all good.
But they're not taking tires. You're in, you're.
It's a good thing.
All that, right? Charge for mattresses, no white goods, no electronics, no tires.
Okay.
Perfect. So then they'll just come out, dump the trash truck and be on their way.
Yeah. We spoke on your behalf.
Pretty simple.
Probably shouldn't have, but. Okay.
Usually goes pretty well.
What else, sir?
Uh, I believe that's it.
We're an hour behind schedule, so.
One, one quick question in my head. Somebody asked me about your, your branch's policy, cause it's gotten several different answers from whoever, whether it's Jamie or somebody else had answered it. What, what is it exactly? Are you taking branches?
Yeah, we do, and we have room. We need to burn the pile that we have and then we'll start taking them again.
So that, you don't burn them regularly? You just wait till the right time?
Right.
But people can bring branches?
Yeah, we're kinda, we're almost out of room where we stockpile them right now. And so I really need to, if it rains this week, you know, and the wind stays down, we could probably burn a bunch of that.
Everybody's thinking about burning that, cause nobody burned last year, per se.
Right. Yeah, we couldn't burn last year.
Okay, good.
So yeah, if it's, if it's, uh, gets to rain and then we'll, we'll go ahead and.
And that's supposed to happen this week?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll see. Be good. I'd like to be able to do that and make some more room over there for people. Be a good thing. Because we just sent them down to the sawmill now.
Yeah, that's what they were saying. And he charges thirty-five bucks, uh, whatever.
Oh, is that right?
All right, sir. Anything else?
I think that's it. Nice clock.
Uh, I apologize for not mentioning that yet.
So you, you could read it.
Landfill has donated to our collection of items that are unique and unusual, and you'll pay attention to the clock.
How many times is that thrown away?
You can't just look at it. You have to study it a little bit. Uh, to your credit, sir, it's the only clock I have ever in sixty-five years witnessed that runs backwards. Including the second hand. And you see.
We're gonna be on time in another hour.
So we took it great. And you see where we located the clock right over on that third of there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on. Uh, Rogan Bridge. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Hey, Gary.
How's it going?
Good, sir. How are you doing?
Good, sir.
Welcome.
Got a show and tells, I think?
Yeah, I've had this for a while. I'm gonna put it down here on Hermit Bridge so that.
Oh, nice.
So that we've got.
Oh, my gosh.
So that we've got a date on there and you guys can go down.
On Hermit Bridge.
You're ridiculous.
You guys can go down in history.
You're ridiculous. Turn it around if you would, sir. Oh, my lord. My name's not on here. Will you show these guys, please? You're a mess.
And for the live streaming too.
That, I have, we did not sanction this.
No.
We would not spend county.
Well, I can, I can put it on backwards if you don't, and just write a date on my.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. Well, that was a nice thought. Thank you. We didn't have anything to do with it. You, you and your folks did all the work.
You signed some documents.
Oh, my gosh. I thought it was a road sign. I'm not kidding you. I thought it was like.
Well, it used to be, the limited part.
Very nice. Thank you. So Magchloride, let's start with that.
Okay.
Exciting.
Yeah, we had a little bit of a hiccup last week when we got that snow out here on Copper Gulch. But all it does is drive that material, that product deeper in the road. So I mean, it's not a bad thing. I prefer not to have rain or snow on it, but, and, and because of that, tomorrow, we're gonna hold off on doing, we were gonna finish.
You did some of it, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yesterday.
Yeah, we've done all of Oak Creek grade. We've done all of Copper Gulch. We did the two-point-one miles on Airport. And we're putting our second coat on two-seventy-one and two-sixty-five today. And then we were gonna finish two-sixty-five tomorrow, but with the forecast, we're gonna just hold off until Monday. And we'll finish that up Monday, a little short stretch, and then do, um, Rosita Road. So, and that'll take care of it all.
What, where's County Road three-fifty-eight?
Uh, that is Junkins Park.
Ah, okay. And we were widening that, huh?
Oh, we had a couple of blind curbs that we worked on this winter with the dozer.
Get to the top?
Yeah, on the way down.
Going down.
Well, on the way down.
Really bad, a lot of washboard.
I've been on it for years, so I don't know.
It was about a mile before, about a mile and a half before you get to McKenzie Junction.
On the lower end.
On the lower end, where we took one of those corners and widened it out because it was.
Subdivision down there, but.
Yeah. It's just one of those winter projects with the dozer and the white more guys. Just made it safer.
What size is your dozer, by the way?
It's a D-six.
Six. I see they have one for sale up here in Silver Cliff. Little four, it looked like. I didn't pay attention.
I saw that earlier. Yeah.
Why don't you buy it and I borrow it?
That's what I was hoping you might.
Yeah.
Got a project.
We get Smith to buy it and we can both borrow it. Uh, good, good, good. Um, Mr. High and I had an opportunity to drive around the, the west side of the valley last weekend, I guess it was, wasn't it? Um, have you given any thought to the lower, lowest portion of Hermit, I mean Kettle Lane, sorry. I forget the road number.
No, um, got kind of preoccupied.
I haven't been over it since then, so I don't know what's going on, but it'll be interesting if this weather comes in.
Yeah, I need to get out there.
It's a hot mess right now.
Yeah, it was boggy the day we went through it and.
Yeah, I know what a person could do to that in the future to remedy it, but, uh.
It's pretty muggy. We gotta get it elevated at some point.
Exactly. I think we need to elevate it. We need to go in there with about twelve or, yep. Put a base down and then cap it with material. Same way with, uh, muddy. I think we need to eventually do that because, well, like we talked about, the road is no higher than the, than the water level on each side, so.
Weren't you looking at, uh, mashed up tires or something for base that, uh, chalked up tire?
You know, I checked into that and the expansion was.
Ask it with the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, I visited with Scott Camper a little bit the other day. Just, he come out to the house on a personal thing. He said, back in the day, Cyford had volunteered the, that he would take his excavator down there to, to maybe deal with those bar ditches along Kettle Lane, cause he lives right there. Uh, I don't know if that could still be a possibility or not.
I think it might, because I was talking to Vince Cook the other day, or, and, or Cook, I'm sorry, Cook. But he mentioned that, uh, it was offered again, so.
So I don't know if that's something we need to reach out to and see if he'd be interested, cause that's gonna be a problem. Can't put a piece of equipment down in there, it'd go out of sight, but.
That's right. Same way with, a certain time of year, you can do it on muddy, but.
Frozen.
Didn't the ground's frozen.
I think even, you know, midsummer, July and August, over here on Kettle, it's still too wet in those ditches to do something like that, so. Yeah, I think that's probably what needs to be done. If we can get rid of some of that material in the ditches, it'll be a place to hold the water versus saturating into the road as badly.
Be kind enough to dig it out and we haul it off.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll sure check with them over there. That'd be great if.
Yeah, I've not responded to Mr. Sass yet from our deal last weekend. Um.
What's that?
Uh, landowner on the south side of Muddy Lane has been getting some, uh, gravel and rock material walked out into his haymeadow because we had a blowout on a very, very marginal bar ditch along that road because it's on the downhill side and on the outside of a curve. There really wasn't a bar ditch, but it washed out uphill and ran a bunch of material out on his property. So, uh, I, I told him I would respond to him after we had a chance to look at that. I don't know. Gary and I went and looked and we talked about some possibilities, but I, I, I'm assuming your plate's been full with this Magchloride project. So I'll tell you, probably we just looked at it. We may have a couple of plans, but.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, I think that I'll be able to go out there in the next couple of days and take another look at it.
Yeah, if you guys aren't Mag, Mag and my.
It'll free up a chance.
But I do need to respond to him because he was, you know, pretty patient and understanding in the email that he sent me, so. Sweet.
And I know some of these forest service roads are gonna need to be deleted before Memorial Weekend. They're gonna get a lot of travel with the snow we've had this winter, so.
And you know, we did open the top portion of three-sixty, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I haven't been over there, so I don't have any idea what's going on with that road, but.
Yeah.
It was in pretty good shape when we were over there last winter.
Yeah, and I think it still will be because that burn scar was below that. And for that reason, the rains, the burn scar's not having too much effect on that.
Right.
On that upper end, so.
Yeah, you'll get that.
What else, sir?
I think that's it. I know that, uh, with doing this Magchloride, that's gonna free up a lot of our time to where we can concentrate on other things. That we've gotten behind on in the past year or so with the dry winter last winter.
How many tandem axle dump trucks do we have?
We've got three belly dump. Well, we've got, are you talking about the ones that pull, we've got three?
Yeah, trailers.
Yes.
Like straight frame.
Dump trucks.
Double axle dump.
Oh, tandem dump trucks we've just got. Well, we've actually got three.
I was thinking if Cyford would agree to dig out those bar ditches if we haul that material off.
Mm-hmm.
Could we keep it busy for half a day or whatever if we had enough trucks?
Well, we could come up with a forest one with the wetmore truck. So yeah, we could, he wouldn't be waiting on our dump trucks, so.
Well, would you take that under consideration when you get time and?
Sure. In fact, I'd like.
We gotta do something down there, man. That is.
Yeah, I'd like to have that material. Doesn't have a lot of rocks in it, cause we can use it for, um, topsoil cover on our reclamation.
It's all topsoil, it's my.
Store it out there and let it dry. That's what I.
It'd be perfect.
Scott and I were talking about that, but anyway.
Can I ask, what's the cost of the Magchloride per mile?
On the initial treatment, like on a road like Copper, or even Oak Creek grade where we hadn't done it for years.
Right.
Yeah, we have to put it down at an application rate of a half a gallon per square yard. And based on the square yards and the, and the width of the road that we're doing, it runs about forty-three hundred dollars.
Per mile?
Per mile. And then from this point forward, if we continue putting it on that road, which we should, maintenance treatment is half of that, so. So it's only gonna be about twenty, twenty-one fifty, twenty-one seventy-five. So it cuts that cost in half. This year, we're doing about almost thirty-three miles and it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Next year, if we do that same thirty-two miles, it'll be half that cost, sixty thousand. But based on the, the amount of maintenance costs that we save and things like that, it's, plus the time that it frees up for us. It's, I found out just yesterday that, uh, well, our surrounding counties, based on our road material and the lack of moisture, you know, annual moisture. Pueblo County, for instance, they do half million gallons a year. And, um, we're doing a hundred and sixty thousand gallons. So we only do a third of what they're doing.
And, and you're using a scarifying blade on those maintainers first?
Yeah, we kinda.
Like when he's opening these new roads. You don't have to do that again on Rosita Road, huh?
Yeah, we have to.
Or you do?
We have to, because, um, the surface gets so tight and compacted that it won't absorb that product. So we have to go in there and kind of graze it a little bit with that bit system on a blade. It lets it absorb into it.
And that takes that blade out of use for doing regular road maintenance, right? You wouldn't use that same cutting edge or not?
Yeah, we do actually use that bit system for routine blading. We've got two of them that we're operating right now. And when we, we have to do traffic control also, it, it takes like seven or eight guys to do this for two weeks. Because we got two blades going, we got three water trucks, that's five guys. And then we have to have two guys for traffic control. Cause when we put the product down, we do a twenty-two foot width right down the middle of the road. So we have to shut the traffic down for a mile and a half. And while the product truck goes through and, once he gets through, which only takes about ten to twelve minutes, then.
So I had my radio on the other day and they were putting down Magchloride and you guys were screaming at someone who went zooming around them down the ditch around it. I don't, you just, no.
Yeah.
You spurt that when you're talking about Magchloride, how to close the road. This guy decided he didn't wanna get closed and he was just going around you guys.
Yeah, I had my hand up. I had a panel out and I had the stop sign.
I know.
And I was just getting ready to say, you're only gonna have to wait five minutes. And he just went right up. And I was like, okay. You see, uh, see a lot of stuff out there.
Just, if I may, sir.
Yes.
Um, I've had at least three people in the last month come in and mention to me at my store that the roads have never been in better shape, even after the winter. They asked me to pass, I asked them if it's okay if I passed a compliment on them. They said, sure. I want to just compliment you and your crew for the work you do.
I appreciate that. Well, do the best we can.
Along that line, let me, let me, I was gonna bring this up with Gary later, but, um, good time to talk about it. You know, listening to him talk and people ask me, when are they gonna fix this road? When are we gonna do this? And when are you gonna put a new surface on school field for it?
Mm-hmm.
You oughta do some thinking about, uh, the airport puts a factoids in, you know, did you know that X happens at the airport? We oughta make a notice in the two papers, uh, uh, just to keep people up speed. We're gonna be out on three miles of Oak Creek and we're doing this. Uh, you know, we, we got the wash, big washboard problem over here, a washout or whatever, blowing out like you were talking about at Kettle Lane where we got worry about raising the road at some point. Get, get them thinking ahead, get them seeing what we're doing now. And also let them know that the roads we're on have people working on. Certain times, it'd be good PR because everybody's saying, you know, where's. We hear a lot of good compliments, but there's always somebody that's saying, they don't do anything for me.
One of my.
They don't know that you're, you're doing a lot of neat things.
Yeah, I was in church on Sunday and two of the little ladies that live in Rosita Hills called me and kind of mentioned the same thing. You're never over here. What do you, what do you?
You need to be, well, we were there last week and we did five miles and you were below that.
You need to be over here tomorrow working on this and I.
Kind of think about how to do that in the papers. We can, we can make, uh, press announcements or, or we can even do a. It'd cost a lot to put a little classifying thing in the paper where it's noticeable.
Yeah, yeah, well, that way they think, realize that.
Sure.
That's gonna take.
Your taxpayer money is well spent.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thanks, Gary.
Take care.
It would be criminal to take a break, so we'll do DHS and then maybe take a break.
Okay, cause I'll be fast.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't mind jacking her around.
Oh, I don't care.
Well, I was waiting to mess with.
Oh, yeah, cause it.
Come forward, ma'am. How are you?
Cause court's coming out, aren't they?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay. Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Clint. How you doing today?
She saw me on TV.
No, I didn't see you. I knew you were here.
You're right there.
I was right. I was sitting right there. I could see you. Just checking out the backwards clock and those really nice things on the back shelf there.
Thank you. You're so kind.
Which I don't wanna mention what those are.
Thank you. You're also kind.
Yeah, I thought that would be better just to avoid that at all times, but whatever. Okay.
I'm not gonna lie to you. I did not load the dashboard onto my board package today. I don't understand most of it.
That's okay. I, I just, I know. They just want you to, they just try to keep us aware of what's going good, what's not going good. Da, 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 da. I look at it and then I just, I have a document that I just stick it in and I can look at it later, so, but yeah. They really get themselves all excited about the dashboard and, as we say, as a lot of us directors, it's there, we know it's there, but we're just trying to get business done, you know? So, that's whatever. So, I don't know if you wanna look at the reports and, oh, we can just skim right through them. We are coming up on to state fiscal year will be ending in June.
I'd say that's why some of these are.
Yes, and so I have to do mitigation for my child welfare, which I do every year because of placement cost. And we've had some high placement costs this year, cause we've had some kids.
Quite a few.
That were in, um, P Y C detention that the judge has ordered us to take, so we have them in treatment centers up in Denver. So I'm definitely gonna, um, be mitigating. I have to have it in by sometime this month. They've sent me the form, so I will be doing that, so.
And the only thing I saw was leave. Huge month difference between February and March. I'm assuming...
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Oh, yeah, well, that's because February, February is the second payment that goes out. See, they do a payment in November, then they do a second payment in February. So anybody that got a payment in November and December got another payment there. So now, March is just the, just the people that are eligible for the month of March. And they receive the full amount, they're not gonna get a second payment. And then April will be the same way, and then it ends in April. So that's why it looks so funny.
From forty-eight thousand in February to three thousand in March.
That, that's why it looks so funny.
The anomaly was good.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you don't mind on the next one, the medical transportation.
Okay.
We've put out two people, number of months payments, two, after one for February.
It just depends on their...
But you went up four times, did you take away the expenses or something?
I noticed that, I noticed that too, and I thought, wow, I did, I thought, I saw that too. And I'm like, what the heck? But it could be they're going to Denver, they're going to Carl Springs. But I, I was gonna check that with Rhonda and she wasn't in, because I thought...
That would just flash that.
It flashed at me. Yeah, it flashed at me too. And then the other thing could be, I don't know, I don't know.
Did you see the bar graph?
Yeah, 'cause look at it, yeah, I saw that too. And then Rhonda was gone when I was doing this and then I forgot to...
Two extra people, I was thinking you took away the expenses.
Two extra providers, you know? But the other thing is, see Rotary. Rotary is a provider, but we do, they take a lot of different people. So I'm, we're just counting them as one provider. But this time, they may have taken ten people as compared to five people, you see what I'm saying there? So that could be it too. We're gonna have just, you know, two more providers, but they may have had a whole lot more expenditures going to them. So that's probably what that one is. When I thought, I thought that's probably got to be Rotary, but I forgot about it when Rhonda got back.
Well, we made a block grant, same thing, six times more expenditures in March than it was in February. So six hundred percent increase.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so, yep, it just depends. And like you said, it depends on like that one in February, whether I just paid an electric bill or something. And then this month, I probably paid some rent, two rents is what I'm thinking. Or a rent and a high propane bill or something, so it just really skews that.
So that's not because you're running a shoddy operation over there?
No, well, could be that too, but you know, but that's, that's how that, but yeah, it just looks weird. And like on my, on my daycare, if you go back to the first page, on the bottom here on this graph, I actually, it's weird because I have one daycare provider that I make, I make payments to. But they actually get four payments, that provider gets four payments in the month. So I always do it is, because they get paid weekly. So I always do it as one because it's one provider. But I maybe should be doing it as four, because they're gonna get four payments. So I think I'll change that. It's kind of, you know, it's going to the same provider, that's the amount that they got that month, but...
So it shows as one payment.
It's one payment, but it's four payments too because they just get paid weekly. I don't pay them, but I mean, it comes from the state and they get paid weekly on it. So I think I'll change that, in case you guys are wondering about that one. And then...
And I'm still not getting any money for old age pension. I don't know when I become eligible, but I keep waiting.
Oh, you're there.
Do I have to come in?
But your income is too high, so don't even bother to darken my door. Okay?
Thank you.
Anytime, anytime, anytime on that one. And then our CSBG grant, yeah, it's like twenty percent. And then Energy Outreach and Energy Outreach Grant is due the end of this month too for next month or next year. So I'm working on that too, so.
And those numbers aren't huge.
No, those, no, those numbers are not huge right now. I've done a couple of payments, I've got a couple of payments going out in April, but we're almost to, yeah, twenty-nine. So, 'cause that screws it there, but anyhow. And then our, and then our SNAP or date, our food assistance looks a little weird. We did, we went up eight households in the month of March compared to February. We've been a little busy with those lately. And then the next one is just our two family. Yeah, so, yeah, so we're getting, I'm working on the Energy Outreach Grant, I'm working on the mitigation. Stacy and I are going today after work and headed to Frisco for a day and a half training for adult protection because we have to get our training hours in. And if we do this one, we think, well, it'll be good and we don't have to try to go another one, so. And they're paying for our motel, so we like, yeah, so we like that, yeah, so we're gonna...
Vacations.
Yeah, you know, we, we reserve room and then we get a thing saying, no, we're gonna pay for that. So we said, okay, great. Fonda will be done, she is done with all of, all of her trainings for child welfare. She has to do some in-house stuff with Stacy, which I can never remember the name of those. But she does them on the computer and then they go over them. So once those are done, then she'll be certified. She has to do a week-long training for adult protection, that's in June, and then she'll be certified for that. So we're almost...
Almost there.
Almost there.
Good.
And then I have a gal who works for vocational rehab, she's out of Salida. She called me a couple of months ago and needed a place to meet with clients. And she goes, does DHS have someplace? Uh, no, 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 no. But she's been using the break room. And she's there usually from twelve to one or one to two, it's just an hour, and it's usually once a month. But it seems to be working. I didn't know and it's okay. And she said, well, if nothing else, I can meet with them in a hall. And I'm thinking, well, I don't think we want to do that. So the break room's been working. And I, you know, and I didn't know about the annex, I don't know how that works, who you should even contact, find a date and time.
Be viable or smarter over there.
The county's gonna have a nice little spot you can use.
Somebody's gonna have a wonderful spot.
Oh gee, really? Oh.
We're gonna have a little conference room in the back of our building, it would be perfect for that.
Oh, great. Oh, and then you and me and Kathy Clark can meet there. Dandy, when's that gonna happen?
June first.
Oh, okay, 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 that's good to know.
We're gonna vote on commissioners today, of course.
Oh, well, okay.
Assuming it passes.
Yeah, we did...
We may be, which we're welcome to as well.
We did wall off that room over in the annex, so that could be a possibility.
Right now, I, what I, it's, it's on Tuesdays that she comes, so I always check with the court, make sure, because today's Tuesday, they had court today. But I always check with them to make sure, and so far, it hasn't been a problem. And so she's been meeting with them there and it's fine. And so, that's good. She, she goes over to the school and then she comes and needs to meet with those guys, so it's been working.
Public health conference room would be the better place.
Oh, oh, it certainly would, once that gets up and going, I'll send them right up.
Super confidential and...
Yeah, you can just let me know whenever. And then when she calls, or she always emails me and then I'll just maybe turn her on to you and then that's gonna work it out. Perfect.
Okay.
Good to know.
Good.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Perfect, thank you ma'am.
Aren't you glad to know that?
Anything you need from us that you don't have?
Uh, no, we finally got all of our computers and wires and everything ran and around and moved our printer, which has been very helpful to get that thing away from me. And so we finally got all that done. We didn't have to put the post in or the pole in, and so that's all working well, so.
Had a little water leak on some of her property downstairs, but we're working on mitigating that.
Yeah, yeah.
But still, here we are, county building, and we're up there with a tube of caulking trying to keep the roof from leaking.
Yeah, and it does that. It hasn't, it hasn't done that in a few years now, but yeah, it leaks down in there and that's all we can say about it.
We're working on it.
I know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Clint. I see, you just like it when I don't have to...
Just never run into you, so it's nice.
Oh, yeah, never run into me, ever, ever, ever. Okay, see you guys later.
With consent, gentlemen, I would recommend about a twenty-five minute break.
That's fine, I got plenty of stuff to do.
Oh, you do, so about four or five minutes. Commission meeting will now resume order. Our next item of business, staff report from public health. Welcome. Look at all that food in our mouth now, so.
Me too.
All right, first thing before I forget, I have the nursing contract from OPIPI. If you please sign it, that'd be fabulous.
Nice.
It's just the usual. Well, whoever, whoever you want to, you've signed it in the past, but it makes...
Attorney Smith says you want to vote on that, or? I move we approve the Community Outreach Austin Planning Partnership Improvement.
What's that? Thank you.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? I'm assuming it's business as usual.
It is business as usual.
I could sign this without doing that previously.
Yeah, well...
There a comment, but from now on, maybe you need to bring it in.
Right.
No, it's, there is two more forms that are gonna come, well, one's gonna be in a, like an official signature page that I have to get now. Um, so I'll be hitting you up for that later. And then, um, I just talked to Donna about the insurance, liability insurance, the state wants a copy of that that we have, so it's no big deal.
Good, any other discussions? Good, prior to signing, we'll take a vote. All of them will say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hosne, motion carries.
All right, um...
So, since I can't get my thing to open up, what did you just approve?
Uh, the Office of Planning Partnership and Improvement OPIPI.
And it's the nursing contract that essentially pays my wages while I'm working on that part anyways.
Was that in your, um, stuff that you sent over?
No, 'cause it just came.
She usually calls me.
You look at it.
I gotta send it in right in house and run off.
I'll send you a copy of it though, for sure.
I'd get this anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you get your shingles vaccine yet?
Nope, and I'll tell you what I'm telling people, go down the hill, go somewhere else. Unfortunately, the company that makes it doesn't think that Little Custer County is gonna need shingles vaccine apparently because it's now been a year and a half since they promised us we could get it. And I've sent three strongly worded letters to them and they just pat me on my little head and say, we're sorry, you're really little.
They keep saying they're gonna get it to us?
Yeah, but about every five months, they tell us in five months it'll be here, so.
So Alyssa being excluded from this question, who's ever taught a CPR class? All right, I can't imagine teaching four of them in a month. I hate to take them one every five years. So my point is, good job.
Thank you. It's not that bad, really, it's like the nurseiest thing I get to do these days.
How long a class are they?
Four hours, four and a half hours, depending on the group, you know? If I get really engaged folks, then it takes a little longer, but, yeah. So yeah, it's not bad at all, actually. Um, any, does anybody have any questions before I get started on my?
Do you have a copy of a lease agreement, do you need it?
I do have a copy of it.
Uh, I think we're...
To sign, I was just wanting to...
Yes, please.
Can I do that now or in the, yeah?
It's gonna be...
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, so on the immunization program part, aside from the shingles, there is an active case of measles in Fremont County right now. Thank you, ma'am. So we are getting a lot of phone calls, but mostly from older people, of course, as our population is primarily older. Um, so just for the record, if you were born before nineteen fifty-seven, it's just assumed that you've either been exposed to or have had the measles. And so if you do have had that, then you don't need vaccinated. We're willing to vaccinate if you just are like super adamant about it, but it's really not necessary if you were born before nineteen fifty-seven. If you were born after nineteen fifty-seven or during nineteen fifty-seven and haven't been vaccinated, you should be, so.
Is that a light type?
It is. So.
MMR.
Mumps, rubella.
Measles, mumps, rubella, rubella is German measles. So, so that's...
I think I'm packing a scar, aren't I?
That's probably from your smallpox.
Smallpox, thanks.
Got it.
So.
I've had them all.
Yeah. Um, so that's, that's my biggest takeaway for right now, one, immunization. Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna go ahead and bite on the whole kissing bugs thing.
So the kissing bugs thing, as you've all seen on, besides you on Facebook, I'm sure. Um, issues about there's been face, or been kissing bugs in Colorado. One county on the western slope, they found kissing bugs. Now, this is disgusting, but it is a bug that will bite around your mouth while you're probably sleeping, I would imagine. Otherwise, you would swat it away, hopefully. Um, anyways, it, it bites you and then defecates in the wound. And that's how you get the virulent, is through that. Now, this bug that they found in Colorado doesn't do that. It crawls off of you before it defecates. So even though there's, there is this bug in Colorado, it's even less of an issue because it's not spreading the disease.
I was gonna say, not different method of transmission, but probably lack of.
Yeah, yeah, there was one child that got the Shigella's disease, but it was determined that it actually came from Texas and he had it in Texas before he came up. So it's good to be aware, but at the same time, probably not a giant issue.
In all of our scientific life, we call these kissing bugs.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if somebody thinks they have a kissing bug, which I expect I'll probably see some this year, people who think it's a kissing bug because they look just like box elder bugs.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, yeah, so if you think it is...
And baggies.
Bring it to me and I'll send it to the state entomologist and she can tell us that it's a box elder and we can go on about our life. Um, HEPE vaccination protocol, I'm starting that in the jail. I, so what that looks like is when we get a new inmate in, I will look them up in Cedar in SIS, which is my state database, database, see if they've been vaccinated for HEPE or if... This is the part I haven't decided yet. If they tell me they've been vaccinated with HEPE, we'll see what happens. I still am not sure I'm gonna buy it a hundred percent. Because it's a very inexpensive vaccine, either insurance or Medicaid will pay for it or we have it in the three seventeen stockpile, which means we can give it for free. So in my opinion, it's a no-brainer. We start vaccinating these guys when they come in because they're the highest risk population.
Is it mandatory?
It is not a mandatory drug, or I mean vaccine.
If a prisoner has an option to opt out if he can.
Of course they have the option, yeah. Um, just like parents have the option to opt out for their children, but...
Yeah, it's different because as you're a prisoner, you've lost some rights.
Right, but that still is like a medical right and we're injecting something in their body, so.
That's why I asked.
Sure, yeah, yeah, they, they absolutely have the right to opt out. In my experience, they don't typically because they know that they're high risk in there. So, and the first vaccine is like ninety-four percent effective. And then the second one is, covers the rest of that. So typically, it's, um, it's pretty, pretty effective even if they don't get the second dose, so. Um, that's gonna also go for the staff working with the inmates and, well, really, anybody in the SO because they are exposed as well, so. Health fair, I think health fair was a success. We had about a hundred people less this year than last year. Um, but that being said, we drew four hundred and twenty people's blood and if somebody gets a result that helps save their life, then in my opinion, that's a win.
So strictly from the numbers standpoint, is it really a health fair or is it a blood draw?
Um, I mean, it's a health fair because of all the information that we have available.
Thank you.
If people would spend the time to go in there. Um, we are looking at how to make that more appealing for people to, to go through and, and see the booths, you know? My thought is to wind that line into that blood draw through the... My thought is to wind that line into that blood draw through the, through the.
Somehow.
Yeah, through the fair.
My perspective was, hey, we can set up all the booths we want and feel great about it, that does not make it a health fair.
It doesn't.
Available is one thing, are people utilizing it and picking up that material, or not?
So, we did, we did track that this year, um, and our most popular booths, of course, were like the blood pressures, um, and the, the lung function, those were, those were the two most popular spots, um.
You ran out of colorectal, um, kits, I had a lot of people complaining, because I was shaking everybody's hand.
Right, and we got them, we got more, like, when there was ten minutes left in the fair, they brought them up, so, yeah, that was kind of gonna back up, but.
Yeah, that turned off.
I think your little.
It is turned off.
Card that you.
The passport thing?
Really, I never used to go through there, and then, now I have to go through there, even though I haven't won yet.
Dualy noted.
I think that helps.
Okay, good, um, that's good feedback, yeah, because we kind of thought that maybe.
Yeah, I didn't.
Maybe it did, maybe it didn't, so.
So, when you say that, just as a little levity, I, I was one of the greeters, so, when people came in, I shook their hand, thanked them for coming, and directed them. And at least two people said to me, "I don't care about any of this, I'm just here for the free stuff."
Oh, nice.
I said, "Well, start over there, and then go there."
Last year, you had a Yeti and a TV, right?
Not a TV, uh, a Yeti and a Instapot. And.
What this year, I didn't even see that.
Well, we did forty-dollar gift certificates to local places in lieu of, it was the fortieth health fair.
Yeah, and when you stop at each of them, you get, I came home with a lot of stuff.
Yeah, you get some pretty good swag, if you really stop and pay attention, so.
And there's some good information.
Yeah, so the thing is, how do we get people to realize that?
That's my whole point, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is, we're gonna stop letting them out of the multipurpose room. Because they just come in and go through, you know?
So, maybe you let them in the blood draw from the doors of the multipu, or of the gym.
Yeah, the other thing I've been thinking about is possibly moving the whole shebang to the new gym, if the school would let us, and then use that area.
Commons area?
In, yeah, that commons area, and that little, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Concession stand.
Concession stand area, and then providing breakfast available, so then if you go through, then you can eat.
Yeah, and you know that line forms out in the hallway, well, why not have that line, of course, they're not gonna get out of line, but at least they'd be in the same room.
Right, that's what we're thinking, and so if we put the blood draw at one end and all the tables at the other end, so then, then, yeah, you stand in line, you're standing next to those tables.
This is a line, you're gonna go right by these tables, so you might as well talk to them while you're waiting.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I just. There's a ton of man-hours involved in that thing, and, and you could tell, the traffic was, come in, say hi to, snort. Right down, out the doors, and to the blood draw, and then out the west doors, and they were gone. So.
Because they were hungry.
Well, so that's, yeah, that's what we're saying, too, if we feed them. Then.
They might stick around. Can anybody have a tip?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you just have to get with us pretty quick, because the space fills up, so, and at, well, I mean, anybody being, it has to be health-related.
Could be an alternative health, kind of stuff?
Well, that's sticky, too, if, it depends on what the alternative is, you're thinking the doTERRA stuff?
Oh, I don't know, I just was.
Yeah, um. It, it depends on what that is, that's why we have some of that stuff up on the stage, because it's it's a little dicey, and so public health sponsors that area, so then it's like separate from the health fair. So.
And I was promptly informed, and I guess I probably knew this over the years, I just kind of forget it, the clinic does not put on the health fair.
No, sir.
Public health department.
Public health puts on the health fair in Custer County.
And I think that gets lost somewhere along the way.
Well, we're hoping to rectify that with our further item of business. But, yeah, it is, and it, it's, not that the clinic doesn't help out, don't get me wrong, they, you know, Lisa Drew helped out with the Ask a Professional, the, the nurses helped draw blood, you know? They, they, they help, for sure, but it's completely organized and put on by public health, for sure.
So, the blood draw averaged what, there was four hundred and some people?
Four hundred and twenty.
How many for bottomless in there, maybe?
Ten.
Ten? So you're looking at an average of forty draws.
Which, in the past, we had five more from, um.
Down below, they come up.
Nine health, what is it? Whatever the lab is, but they didn't send it, because of their budget cuts, we didn't get those five, and then we had four people that were signed up to draw that didn't show up, so we were a little behind the eight ball with drawers this year, which is why the lines got kind of long, I think. But, so anyways, um, the only thing I really have. We're working on, um, getting that pod training going, in fact, I think we might be able to do that sooner than I thought, because our regional, our regional partners are gonna help us do that through the, um, M R C. And the Second Chance Program, um, there's a new administrator for that in Fremont County, which is the, essentially, if you're a kid and you get caught smoking, or drinking, or doing drugs, you don't just get your head cut off the first time you get caught, you do, like, when you're in detention, then you have to do the Second Chance Program, and what it is, is like, it's actually pretty good, it's pretty, um, graphic pictures and information about what happens when you smoke and drink, and what, you know, what potentially does to your body, potentially does, you know, if you get in a wreck, there's some awesome, like, wreck pictures, I mean, I say awesome, 'cause I'm a trauma junkie, but. Um, but it i, it is pretty impactful, so, and the program is available through the summer, so if a parent has a kid that gets busted, and they're like, "We wanna make an impact here," then we could set them up with it during the summer, too, so.
What meeting were we in? And I applaud you for this, when you basically said that there was no way you were going to, as a public health nurse, support.
Needle exchange and safe injection sites, that was the meeting we had with Scott Tipton.
Oh, that's right, thank you, yeah. Wanted to stand up and applaud for you, personally, I will oppose that.
Yeah, same.
As well as, I know you will.
Yeah, there, you know, obviously, it's a controversial subject, and, um.
Not from where I live, it's not.
It's, it's just, I, I don't see that there is a benefit enough to create the controversy that it would bring to this county. It, there's not enough benefit to it.
Or you give them this room to go in and inject themselves.
Yeah.
I won't support it.
Look at what San Francisco's.
I'd rather them not do it.
I understand you would rather them not do it, but.
Um, I.
Question, I missed it.
I'm not sure I'm as adamant as both of you.
That's okay, that's okay.
I feel like, you're not gonna stop the behavior, but you can make it safer if they're not sharing a needle, so. And it's just me, and I'm not trying to be.
Sure, sure.
Little lily here, but if they're gonna use needles, you're not gonna stop it by not giving them to, I would hate for them, this, kind of borrow your needle, so I can inject it for whatever it is, rather than have an opportunity to get a free one.
It's our responsibility, which I don't believe it is, but.
Of course, it is, we're preventing disease, that's what we do.
I. I see, I see where you're coming from.
And I respect both of your opinion, I just have a different, that's all I'm saying.
Sure, and that's fine, I personally think that if we're gonna spend money, which it would cost a lot of money to do that, I would rather focus on prevention and education, and programs that give them something else to do, then.
Except in reality, if someone's injecting some illegal drug.
Mm-hmm. Right, and it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, whether it's right in front of us at an injection site, where we have a nurse that can give them Narcan, or it's gonna happen if we don't have that, you see what I'm saying? I agree that we should, you know, that there is the, the probability that they're gonna share their needles.
I didn't mean to get into this discussion.
No, it's fine, it's just, at what point?
No, I, oh, I.
Completely what, how you feel.
Yeah.
I feel differently.
Yeah, yeah.
And at what point are we again in a government overreach?
Well, the minute you start talking about it, but that's me.
I mean, if someone came to you and said, a young person came and said, "I need condoms," is that something that you would give them?
I don't have them, so no.
How do you feel, how do you feel philosophically?
Um.
You're not gonna stop the behavior, but if you stop the disease of unwanted pregnancy.
Sure.
Seems to me like that's something that public health ought to think about. I'm just throwing it out. I don't mean to be a little lily here, again.
Many public health agencies do.
They have many, both, I've been to them, and they have.
Handout.
You take as many as you want, walk it out.
Right.
I don't, of course, but, you know, you could.
Um, so, yeah, there, there we are, in this.
Fixed, oops.
May we, uh.
A little ride along here.
Quick question, ma'am.
Question for Alyssa, did you ever check into blood donation, having them come?
Yes, I'm working on that, we should, um, I'm hoping by July, have a mobile Bonfies unit come up here. So, yeah, we'll be, um.
Thank you.
Advertising that when it comes.
Anything else, ma'am? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you there.
Alright.
Where's the?
The treasure, pardon? Oh, only agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Virginia, we've missed you.
Nice to see you. You've been gone?
Oh, well, yeah, I did, I missed the last one.
Oh, yeah, I said, yeah, got you. Thanks, ma'am.
I would like to say, before we get it.
Yes.
If you treat everybody who walks in your door, the way you treated me when I walked in your door, 'cause I had no idea what I was doing, you helped me and walked me through, I just have to tell you publicly how much I appreciate you and your office. I just want to tell you that.
Wow, let me tap the gavel on that.
My wife likes it, because she insulted me in front of my wife.
You rascal. I was getting ready to make a motion to approve this report, and then I hear that. I would move we accept the report, obviously, we haven't even really digested it in this meeting, but it'll give us an opportunity to do that for the month of April.
I'll second it.
Moving to second it, to approve the April report of the treasure discussion.
Anything anomalies, same question I always ask, any anomalies, anything out of the line, anything we need to brought to our attention? Perfect, I'm good. Yeah, six boys said they sent a check by mail.
Okay.
So now we're gonna look at it, 'cause they, for some reason, can't figure out how to wire it the way we're trying to have them do it.
Yeah, they would prefer a check anyway, so.
Um, anything else?
Not to get in your business, but this is an amended report, 'cause you already approved.
Oh, this is the.
No, this is, this is the different one, this is April's.
This is April.
Did you do?
I didn't.
We did March.
I can look real quick.
On the thirtieth of April, you did March?
No.
Let me back up.
Last month, at the end of the month, we did Marches.
But she wasn't here.
I wasn't here, this is April.
At the end of April, she did March?
Yes.
They're a month behind.
The one we.
Because when I came in, 'cause we had to adjust that day.
Yeah.
And you said, "Oh, I'm gonna have to go give my report to them again."
Well, no.
And change the report.
We didn't give it to them yet, this is it. Rebalanced for the, the month, but then your daughter messed us up, so we had to rebalance for the month, and she'd already printed this, so we redid it. Yes, they haven't seen this, this is the first time.
So what was that report, sorry?
This is it, this is it.
Report that you gave me to give them?
Which was on the thirtieth, that was March.
That was not a part of this deal.
Okay.
March one to March thirty-one. This is when I've got my work packet from the thirtieth.
This one is April.
Then I gotta change my minutes.
Okay. Uh, so the one that you sent via Ms. Kelly was for March.
Yep.
And then you guys had one going for April, and then you had to change it, but we hadn't seen it yet.
We hadn't seen it yet.
So this is not an amended one for us, it might be for you guys, but.
Yeah.
It's not amended until, it's not amended until it's a done deal.
Right, yeah, had we approved it, and then you had to change it, we'd have to amend it.
And I didn't understand that, and so I, when you guys made your motion on the thirtieth, it was for April.
Oh. Ew, well.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you, yeah, 'cause that would've gotten caught when we looked at the minutes, so.
I didn't realize it was a March report, I thought it was April.
I wonder if we need to rescind that motion and, and, uh.
I'll do it on the record to make it.
Yeah, I was, move we rescind the motion.
I was gonna say, yeah.
That's true, so then it would be, it's a motion to rescind, take precedence over the motion to, a main motion, but we're not gonna go back.
This main motion is the April, so we can do it and then come back.
I'll look, but I'll bet it does take precedence, okay. So we do have a motion on the table, don't let me forget, don't let me forget, um. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to approve the April treasures report is presented?
I move we. We already got it on there, what am I saying?
Discussion, if you have any.
We already said it was good.
If you've looked at it and have no problems, hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, aye. Pose nay, motion carries. We will approve this report. And then I move we rescind the action of the board from the May, April thirtieth meeting of approving the March report that was mistakenly referred to as the April report. The movement second to rescind the action of the, uh, of the commissioners from the May, April thirtieth meeting, discussion.
I was just curious, how come it was in there last week like it was anyway? Was that, was that a normal time?
It was not, I was forgotten, I was forgotten on the agenda. Then we put it at the end of the month, and then my daughter ended up getting cancer, and we had to go for surgery that day, so I.
Okay, good.
Any further discussion? Hearing no, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, carries, sure, we entertain a motion to correctly identify the minutes from the
So we, if we would, I'll move that we accept the treasures report, or, the, uh, from the March.
As presented.
As presented.
In the April.
In the April meeting, that was mistakenly writ, uh, recognized as April.
The movement second to approve the
treasures.
March treasures report that was provided at the April meeting. Discussion, hearing then, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. We're all right, Ms. Kelly?
Yep.
Sweet. Uh, you haven't submitted those minutes either, right? So, we don't have to go through dealing with them, perfect, we can approve them. Um, anything else?
No.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Are you sure? You wanna try it again?
Yeah, no, I don't wanna go there again, I'm confused.
Anybody wanna bet on whether the motion to rescind is debatable or not?
Nope.
Thank God it is, I'd forgotten, so.
We were legal. Change your name to Roberts, I think.
Thank you.
Flower.
No, if I was, I would've known, I would've remembered that, I had to look it up. That concludes our staff reports, any unfinished business, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kenda?
No.
Nor do I, we'll move on to new business, as we move into our new business items, the commissioners will allow public comment, uh, and we would ask that your public comments be relevant to the item being considered, if it's an action item. First up, under new business, consideration of selling some Golden Arrow Valley lots, thank you for your patience, ma'am, please come forward.
And an education.
Oh, good, I'm telling, how are you?
I've been on school boards, and church boards, but never have been to a meeting like this.
Yeah, well. I'm not sure how to take that exactly, but we'll go on the high road, how's that?
Well, some of those meetings.
Sometimes they go even slower.
Yeah, probably seven to a hundred school board meetings.
Three years ago, my husband and I bought property. Uh, three years ago, my husband and I bought property, um, almost three miles out from Highway 96. Let's see, who else might be this?
Uh, Attorney Smith and, please. Yeah, I've got it on my computer.
Okay. Uh, at that time, we bought Block 4.
Who we?
My husband and I, Erwin and I. Um, and we bought a couple of them in Block 5, uh, 2 and 3. Since then, we have bought, in Block 3, we've bought 17 and 8 and 7 and 23 and 4. Um, and then down below, we bought Block 5, lots 4, 5 and 6.
Okay.
So we, some of, we, we started out with 17 of Block 3 and we wanted to pay the gal $1,000, but there was another person who wanted it to store their camper on and so we ended up paying, paying $1,500 instead.
So you own Block 17?
So we own Block 17.
Okay. So it's not fair to say that everything numbered in red here you own. That's not an accurate statement?
No.
Okay, all right, good.
Uh, I, I didn't, that would have been a good idea to note it that way, but I did not.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, up on the upper right-hand corner, it says lots 9, 10, 12, so on. And that is property of a man who is retiring in a couple of years and doesn't know yet if he's going to build there.
Okay. Those lots have been vacated, the interior bit, lot line, lot lines have been vacated, correct?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So your request is to?
My request is to buy the county section of Block 3, which is the largest section. The lots are not numbered on that.
Block 3.
On Block 3, the largest one, plus 24.
That includes the land that wraps around 4.
And this sheet is, let's pass this right out.
None of those roads are in that.
Oh, that's, I was going to say that first, but I didn't.
No.
Beth Lane, Coral Lane, Diane Lane and Emma Lane do not exist.
Right, right.
I folded it wrong, so you can't see the block numbers, so you have to unfold it. But everything outlined in red is what the county owns.
So let's, yeah, we'll approach it in some manner that everybody can get on board with here. Uh, so you're here to request to purchase some lots from the county?
Yes, both in Block 3 and one in Block 5.
Okay, all right. Um, so I think, uh.
Those are all landlocked. The, because there is no.
There is no road.
Right, if you're talking about a landlock from roads.
Right.
There's a right-of-way claim.
Well, there is a right-of-way.
Sure, but there's no existing roads.
They're not landlocked because, just because the roads aren't built doesn't mean they're not.
They're still accessible.
Still, uh, easements.
They're on the map as can be built.
Anybody has a right to drive down those easements.
Correct.
Correct. So from my perspective, I think this, here's where I shake out. Number one, um, thank you for your interest. These are lots that would probably be difficult for the county uh, to sell individually because they're 25 by hundreds, uh.
They're, they're 95 feet by 50 feet.
Oh, 50 by 100, okay.
Uh, how far out, just to get perspective here, off the highway is this?
Almost 3 miles.
Is it 3 miles that far out?
Uh, our house number is 2863, so it's 2.863 miles from Highway 96.
What's that?
Yeah, it's about a quarter mile from, yeah, just after the dirt road starts.
And realizing that.
We have, uh, sole county property since this Board of Commission has been seated and we offered any adjoining landowners an opportunity. I think I communicated with that to you.
That was prior to my, our, our living here.
Uh, that was this year. We've done that.
Oh, well, then I missed it.
Not here, but in the county.
Different, different lots.
Other land sales are, I'm not saying it is a hard and fast rule. I'm just telling you what we have done in the past was to offer property to adjoining landowners first and then move forward with that. So my understanding is you are an adjoining landowner to the lots that you want to buy?
To all of the lots that I want to buy.
Can I ask a basic question? Look still, move if you, you're interested in buying Lot 24?
Correct.
Any others?
Uh, on Block 3, I'm interested in, in buying Lot 24 and the large one that has lots 2 and 3 and 5 and 6 and 8.
Do you want, how do you want it marked?
See this?
Not that big black line, just the red line.
This right here.
Uh-huh.
It's slatted, it's just been vacated the interior.
And in Block 5, I'm interested in buying.
Hold on, just a second. Hold on, one thing at a time. What are we doing over here?
Okay, so can I make a comment?
Well.
When she gets done picking out what she wants, in 2008, we went through all of this property and vacated the interior lot lines for what the county owns. So that's how come you see that big chunk there? So that is, uh, known as, uh, what does it say, 5A or?
I don't.
Because it is not known as block, block numbers now. Um.
Got a bunch of numbers, but no 5A.
Let's see, I don't even know if it'd say 5A.
On the left side of that fold.
Nothing.
3, it's Block 3.
So we see 3A. So it might be, it's known as something 3A.
Okay.
So it's just one chunk.
It's also known as 2A.
2A.
All right, let's freeze frame a minute. Let's, let's take a timeout. We are, we're out of control, actually. So my question was to you to indicate to us what properties you want to buy. Let's get that sorted out first, then we know.
Yes, and that's.
So as Mr. Candace said, Lot 24 and Lot 8 in Block 3.
Uh, no.
Sorry, no, Lot 8 in Block 5. Is that the only one in Block?
24 in Block 3.
Yes, ma'am.
The large merged one in Block 3.
Yes.
And Block 5, Lot 8.
Okay, there's two large parcels in Block 3 that are separated by Lot 17. You're interested in both of the large parcels with the interior lot lines vacated?
The large parcel to the west is county-owned. The large one to the east is owned individually by someone who may build on it at retirement.
So it has nothing to do with this conversation. So your lots 9 through 13, A and 15, 16 have no part of this?
Have no part.
Okay, so we'll just scratch all that. All right, okay. So lots 24 and the vacated interior lots in Block 3.
This is 2A.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Just because I'm still a little confused. So we're talking about the empty space between Lot 1 and 4, the empty space between 4 and 7, and the empty space between 3 and 17? Is that all the ones you're looking to buy?
That's 23, oh, 23 and 17.
Yes.
That's correct. That's correct.
This and this.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
That's what they're doing over here on their own, so we need to hold out. Okay, go ahead. You have the floor.
This big hunk is known as 2A Block 3.
Okay, so from this point forward, that's how we will refer to that.
That's illegal on that one, this huge hunk here, which has all the vacated lot lines, which contains 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 lots.
Right, okay. So that's 2A.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
So let's call that 2A.
2A.
Yes, ma'am.
Block 2A, that's 2A Block 3.
2A Block 3 is illegal on that. Now she wants?
Lot 8 in Block 5.
Lot 8 in Block 5. And do you own 9 and 7 around it?
She does not.
1 and 9 are owned by someone who wants to charge me way over its value, in my opinion, of course. And Block 7 is owned by someone who has died and I have not yet been able to communicate to know who has the power of attorney.
We know who has that.
We know who has that, that's right.
To, to let me buy it.
Okay, so that's a, that's a personal thing, so.
Right, that has nothing to do with our conversation today, other than the fact.
So where's the other county line that you want?
Okay, hold on. Other than the fact that you're interested in purchasing Lot 8?
Lot 8.
Okay.
In Block 5.
Go ahead, sir.
That is one, yeah.
Here's a lot, yeah. So look on the map and if it says 900, 901, but any 900 numbers.
Look on what map, actually?
My map.
Oh, well, we can't do that, so.
Okay, we're going to pass it.
She's in Block 3, 8.
Block 5, Lot 8.
Anytime you see a 900 number, that indicates that the county owns it.
Right.
So she wants this and this.
Got it, got it.
Right?
Understood.
Okay.
Yes.
Right.
Let me make a comment. In 2008, we did a lot.
Chair recognizes Jackie.
We did a lot of work and vacated these lot lines, offered them to the adjoining landowners. Had no takers. Well, we did get rid of a bunch, so.
We did have takers.
We did have takers, but these are the ones that didn't have takers and we could get them back on the tax rolls.
Okay, as I was indicating earlier, typically the county would offer adjoining landowners first option to purchase these properties.
Business of 900s.
That's how we have functioned as a board. I can't speak to prior boards, doesn't matter. Um, and we actually did that with the recommendation from the planning and zoning. As I hear you, you're saying you're recommending to the BOCC that's probably not necessary in this situation, or what?
That's my recommendation because I've done this so many times.
Okay, let me pull up that map on the website real quick. Um. Can you tell me your husband's name?
Erwin, I-R-W-I-N.
Could have looked it up, but thank you. Um, so then you're talking about, excuse me, 9 lots in 2A plus Lot 24?
It's a total of 11 lots, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
9.
9.
And then 8 would be 10. And then did you indicate Block 24 or not?
Oh, 24 is 11.
Okay.
So is that this guy here? Yep, so she did want it.
Yeah, my records indicated that, yes. So Lot 8, which was my concern because that's surrounded on 3 sides or on 2 sides by other property owners.
In Block 5, we own Lot 2.
Right.
So we.
You are an adjoining landowner.
Landowner.
Thank you for that clarification. You do not own Lots 7 and 9?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Nor 1.
Okay. Um, any other questions, gentlemen?
So how do they, what are these selling by?
These are, these are not viable lots by themselves. There is not enough separation for a septic and a well.
So the gentleman who wanted to charge you too much, does he, how does he access his land?
He never comes there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
He, he never comes to the land, uh, that I know of. He lives in Wetmore. He has promised his son that he can have lots 1 and 9 in Block 5 to build on. Uh, I don't know if that is engineeringally possible because the land is not flat and it does have a drainage area that goes through there.
But he doesn't come to the property?
But he does not come to the property. We have fixed his fence. We have killed the noxious weeds.
And that's all fenced off from county roads right now except for the entrance to your property, isn't it? All the way along there?
Uh, the only fence is along here.
But I mean along here, it's fenced to is along Creek Great?
No, it's not fenced along Oak Creek Great.
Okay. Uh, and the property you own currently, last name would be listed as?
Burton, B-U-R-T-O.
Just do it on here quick. Thank you, yas. Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Prince? Yes, sir?
So Ms. Burton, on, on Block 5?
Yes.
You do not own 9 and you do not own 7, is that right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, do you own Blocks 2?
Yes.
2 and 3?
Okay, I just want to make sure you had an adjacent lot.
We own 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6.
Who knows, 1961.
And you own, on Block 3, do you own 17?
Yes.
You own 23?
Yes.
And you own 1, 4, 7 and 8?
We own 4, 7 and 8. Number 1, we have not been able to contact the person who has power of attorney. The original owner died.
I know this is very small screen, but the, uh. Okay, so, um, I would move that we actually proceed to enter into a contract with Mr. and Mrs. Burton to sell Lot, Lot 2A and 24 in Block 3 and Lots 8 in Block 5.
I'll second it. That, that's exactly the way it's written.
Moved and seconded that we enter into a contract to sell the aforementioned lots, discussion. Yes, sir, go ahead.
At what price? How do you determine the price? And has the other adjacent owners been an opportunity to bid on it also?
That's what you were discussing.
The motion was to sell it.
Uh, no, to enter into a contract, which would be handling all the things that Commissioner Prince just mentioned. Yeah, to sell, contract to sell, yes.
I thought the contract was a sell to the Burton's.
Yes.
Okay, and so not offering to the other property owners?
Because she's an adjacent.
She is an adjacent landowner.
Precedent.
Not the only one, recognize that. Uh, further discussion. I have a concern about the additional adjoining landowners, but it sounds like it's, there's some extenuating circumstances here. One, the landowner is deceased, correct?
Um, Block, Block 3, Lot 1 and Block 5, Lot 7.
Lot 7, right.
The original owner is deceased.
Okay. Uh, the reason I made the motion, gentlemen, is so we could have some intelligent and reasonable discussion according to the laws governing a meeting. I'd like to follow up on your questions. How do you feel about doing this without contacting other adjoining landowners?
It's contrary to our policy.
Okay.
How would you determine?
I think it's contrary to our procedure. I don't know that we have a policy, that's my question.
We've established that policy previously. We do the procedure, we made a, a big deal about making sure that we're actually landowners. To me, that is a policy. It may not be written down, but it's what we, what we have chosen to follow in the past.
And I would just with respect say, yes, that's certainly our procedure. We have not adopted a policy to do that.
Occur with that.
That I know of. That doesn't mean there's not something on the record, but I, that's all I'm saying. Uh, certainly we did and, and I was all in on that, on a $70,000 piece of property. The dollar figure really isn't relevant. Either there is a policy or procedure or it's not. Uh, want to have this conversation upfront and honestly in front of, uh, Ms. Burton, who you're obviously representing you and your husband both, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Candace, any, uh, discussion?
I agree. Contact, what his concern was with it, we did have that procedure. So I just want to clarify a couple of things. You, did you talk, who did you not talk to?
I've not talked to anyone. I've written a letter or letters.
Both sides of your.
For Block 31 and Block 5, Lot 7. I've tried to contact the people with no success. There's a possibility that one of them is in jail. Uh, on Block 5, Lots 1 and 9, I talked to, oh, there are a couple of letters were written. I talked to Stephen Garrett on the phone and he is willing to sell them to me for $10,000, which is to me beyond reason.
He doesn't want to sell them, does he? Okay. Which is his right and privilege in America. Now, he owns lots 1 and 9.
Of Block 5.
Of Block 5, okay. Uh, Attorney Smith, you want to weigh in on this thing about adjoining landowners?
Uh, yeah, is there, is there still a motion on the table now?
There is.
Yeah.
There is. And we're in debate of that motion, yes.
All right. I can certainly understand offering property to adjoining other adjacent landowners, like under the circumstances of the Biggie Ranch, for instance, where
Right.
He could've had some value to somebody else. I, I mean, the one, I don't see where anybody, with the possible exception of, it's which one lot?
Nine and seven. Yeah, she wants, she's interested in buying lot eight, so the adjoining landowners would be seven and nine.
Okay, I, it could be a formality to send a letter to them.
No, she owns two. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
We're having a discussion over here.
As a formality, we could mail in a letter to the addresses that are on the, on the assessor's records to those properties, let them know there's been an offer, offer to purchase, and we're letting them know, and if they want to bid on it, we will accept their sealed bid.
Certainly was our procedure in the previous land. The owner, with respect to Commissioner Prince, I agree a hundred percent. There are three adjoining, four adjoining landowners to that piece of property, if we include the Burton's themselves. Donna Ellis owns to the, no, she's not adjoining. That's separated by a road, so that does not, that would not be consideration. She's not an adjoining landowner.
The ones to the west are in Old Domingo, I think.
So it would be the owner of lot nine, which is Stephen Garrett, and the owner of lot seven, which is C F and Ruth Clemens.
You said that? You had a problem with finding them?
I've not been able to, they've not responded to my trying to contact him, Commissioner Prince.
Ms. Burton, please excuse me, because it's our job to know. I mean, I agree with you. You tried to reach out to them, you know, individually to buy their property. But we would need, if we follow the procedure we follow before, we need to notify them that, you know, we're interested in some of these lots. Do you have an interest? And if so, what would you be willing to pay? So, and a deceased person there, I'm sure there's somebody administrating the estate, or I would hope there is, because there's real property involved. So that person would then have the authority to do what they feel is appropriate to do with that.
They have continued to pay the taxes.
Okay, so if somebody cares about it enough, it hasn't gone into default.
J D would have a record of that.
I, I'm certainly not in favor of approving this at this time until we follow at least the, um, I'm hesitant to say the word procedure, but we certainly have a history of how we handled it. I hate to waver on that. And I'm not saying, Ms. Burton, that I don't, I likely suspect you'll end up with all of this, and I'm happy to do that. I'm not going to sit here and go, oh, this is county property, we don't want to sell that. That is not where I'm coming from. I just want to follow the proper procedure so that the county is handling this in the correct and judicious way that we need to. If we just sold it today, how are we going to determine the values?
Exactly.
Well, yeah, we, that's the other thing I was going to mention. We, we need to determine what-
Last week, I received a, for every piece of property that we own, I received a new assessor's sheet showing a different property value than for twenty eighteen.
As everyone in the county did.
But maybe, it may be very simple. If you are the only person who responds to a request for bids-
Yes.
Well, then the simple answer is going to be, you're the only one interested, and we have followed the county procedure.
Yes.
So I would have a very hard time supporting the motion that's on the table at the moment.
Well, the motion is to put it up for sale, or I guess it was to enter a contract.
Enter a contract.
Yes, I guess, all right. I think we, my recommendation would be, we follow the practice we established previously.
Before coming here, I understood previous procedure.
Yeah.
Please, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in what you're trying to do. I'm trying to-
I was hopeful, but-
Ms. Jackie?
In two thousand and eight, every one of those people that were mentioned were contacted by a certified letter. Unless the circumstances have changed, you can look in the board minutes in two thousand and eight, when we sold, when the county commissioners made the motion to vacate the interior lot lines that the county owned and stuff. So unless, and the circumstances might have changed. They have to, each of them get a certified letter from the county commissioners asking if they'd like to bid with a period of time. That was the procedure, but I'm saying that we've done this-
Eleven years ago.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, we'll depend on what happens here, but point well taken. So Clemens, so we need to determine, we could do this outside of the meeting, but Garrett, our landowners, adjoining landowners on lot eight. Now, we need to look at the adjoining landowners on lot two A, and we don't have to take that time today, but depending on what happens with the disposition of the motion on the table, then we will move forward with that. It's not only lot eight, is my point. So any further discussion on the motion?
Well, the motion has said let's enter a contract.
Enter a contract to sell these properties.
And it would also imply at a cost of some kind or value?
Well, I didn't mean sign a contract. I mean, or enter into the negotiation portion of the contract and come up with that.
Come up with a price? Is that what you wanted to, for?
Maybe enter a contract wasn't the greatest.
Well, we're agreeing that we will sell them, but we'll offer it to the highest bidder and-
Well, we haven't decided that yet either, so let's deal with the motion we have on the table.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of entering into a contract with Mrs. Burton to sell the aforementioned lots? Say aye. Pose nay. Nay. Motion fails. Okay, so we're not going to do that today. What's the group's pleasure? I think I know, but go ahead.
I move that we do offer these lots, two A and eight, in block three and five respectively, for sale, that we contact the adjacent landowners, give them a short window, two weeks. I don't know what short window would be, but a reasonable time for them to respond, but not an extended period of time, to say if you have an interest, give us a bond if I bid.
Okay, this is a long motion, so I'm going to struggle repeating it exactly.
It's all right. I'm, I'm rambling, but I'm trying to get my thoughts out, and then we can concise it.
Okay.
That we offer to adjacent landowners in a short window, and we accept, no, I'm not going to say we accept, we, we offer it for them and go for it.
All right. I'll second the motion. No, it's, okay. I thought I heard you say the adjoining lots of two A and eight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Which covered it?
It should cover also twenty-four, block three, twenty-four, lot twenty-four.
Yeah, I was going to say you're missing the lot.
Yeah, it's three twenty-four. Block three, twenty-four.
Two, two A and block three, lot twenty-four.
And twenty, let me amend that by adding lot twenty-four.
I had it written down, but we blew right by it.
Yeah, I didn't have two A, I didn't realize. Yeah, you're right, I didn't-
Block three, two A, lot twenty-four, block five, lot eight. By consent, we, you just restated your motion.
Yeah, so are we in discussion yet?
Uh, if we're good on the restating the motion, I think we are. I second a bid. So it's been moved and seconded to offer for sale lots twenty-four, two A, and eight, and contact the adjoining landowners. Discussion.
Now, how did we do it before? Did we just say bid on it and they came up, no, we didn't, so?
We had, and we're, we're really comparing apples and oranges here, but nonetheless, the process was, we went and got a, an appraisal, or a, Jackie, it wasn't appraisal from Mrs. Drew, it was a market evaluation.
Market analysis.
So that's my point.
These were, and they are listed on the county website, valued at two thousand dollars a piece.
That was twenty eighteen.
That's correct.
The new letters are fifteen hundreds.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so that was my point. We're gonna, we're gonna go do, we should state a minimum if we're going to do a correction.
And I would move to amend the main motion by adding, add a price of a thousand dollars per lot. No, the price, thousand dollars a lot.
Thought you said the motion had to put it out for bid.
Yeah, and they're gonna, we're gonna have to notify them.
Then what's bid mean? Does it mean all lot nine hundred and, or are you telling them to buy it for a thousand only?
That's a great point. Is it an opportunity to buy or an opportunity to bid competitively? That's a good point. Thank you.
My intent on the motion was to bid competitively with your amendment at a thousand. I would say minimum amount, the bid is a thousand dollars.
That's what you did.
That's what we did on the other one.
That's what we did.
I think that's appropriate.
Did I get a second to the amendment?
I'll second if somebody amended it.
I did. I moved, I moved to amend it. They moved and seconded to amend the main motion by adding the word minimum of a thousand dollars. Is that correct? Discussions? You're good with a minimum? Okay. All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Or any amendments carries. Will further discussion on the motion?
Just a question. Lot two A, what we have is two A, which is really multiple lots.
Nine would be considered nine lots, is that right, Ms. Burton? You're looking at lot two A as nine lots.
Jay, on the actual flat?
Yes. The original.
It's got an AKA, or also known as twenty-four.
But there are, so we're talking eleven lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Would the minimum be nine thousand dollars on two A?
Yes. Yes. Even though the lot lines are vacated, they're still, we're looking at as sort of nine lots.
Okay.
Vacated, it's one lot.
So-
In two thousand and eight.
Yeah, I suppose we need to refer to that, then technically as lot A, the minimum bid, or lot two A, the minimum bid is nine thousand.
That's correct.
And lots twenty-four and eight, the minimum bid is a thousand.
That's the way it would be.
We good? Because we're gonna have to go back to the minutes to draft up this letter.
I'll tell you, just to do this properly, I think we need to, I move that we amend the motion.
Okay.
To say that lot two A consists of nine lots.
Thank you.
Each having a minimum bid of a thousand dollars. Well, I just want to clarify that two A is not a minimum bid of a thousand dollars.
Which is trying to be legally correct. They vacated those lots. It's one lot.
It is a lot.
It is a lot.
So you'd say nine thousand.
That's the minimum bid on, thank you.
Otherwise, you're going to confuse it.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. You're absolutely right. Two A, the minimum bid is nine thousand. Any other lot that is bid on, bid a thousand.
And I would second that amendment and inform the board that will be the final time an amendment will be allowed to that motion.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we'll throw the sucker out and we'll start over.
Then moving a second to amend the main motion by inserting the words lot two A, a minimum value of a thousand dollars, ten, nine thousand dollars, and lot twenty-four and lot A have a minimum value, a minimum price of a thousand. I didn't mean value, I meant price. Okay, discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Amendment carries. We'll proceed to vote on the main motion, which is to offer these properties for sale with the attached amendments. Further discussion? Public comment. We finally got there. Oh, heck. I thought we were going to have a bunch.
Do it.
Do it. Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of offering lots two A and twenty-four in block three and lot eight in block five for sale, and to contact the adjoining landowners of aforementioned lots with the prices of a thousand dollars per lot and nine thousand dollars per lot two A.
For bid?
For competitive bid. Say aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Then we'll hammer out the details. If we do this this week, I would say ten days would be adequate notice. I'm throwing out a number.
Good enough.
Ten days. By consent, we all it?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Burton, comments about that?
I assume that a letter will also be sent to me to make a bid.
Yes, you're an adjoining landowner.
How does that bid get presented and where and how?
That's a great point, and that'll be in the bid letter. You can send a sealed bid to the B O C C administrative assistant. She will give all of the bids, if we have more than one, to the B O C C. We will open them at the twenty-second meeting. That's May twenty-second meeting in Wetmore. That will give us our ten day window, if they go in the mail tomorrow. And-
With instructions?
Yeah, you'll get a letter, and that'll have all the name, address, and everything to send that to.
Okay.
Yep, 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 yep. So, and it will clearly indicate that lot two A is a minimum of nine thousand dollars, lot twenty-four and lot eight are a minimum of one thousand.
Could I ask a question? Assuming that nobody else bids on this besides the Burton's, would that purchase price perhaps be negotiable since they're the only ones that seem to be, would seem to be interested?
Not, not as the motion stands, at a minimum.
And I understand that. I'm just, because I'm, I don't have any idea how much they were expecting or hoping to pay for these, then that's just an issue.
We were hoping that it wouldn't go to bid, but it has.
Yeah, understood. So unless the board wants to do anything different, then the minimum, it will stand as a minimum bid that we would look at, would be a thousand dollars. Now, what would happen if we did not get any bids? Then I guess we'd go through the process again. Ms. Jackie, do you have any precedence on that? If we did not receive any bids at all? If we got nothing from adjoining landowners?
Then it automatically goes to her because she'll be sending in a bid.
Assuming they didn't bid either.
Burton's didn't bid?
I'm just, we're making an assumption.
If she, let's say-
She didn't say a word about that.
No, I, no, I said that.
Oh, 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 yeah, okay.
Let's say this. Let's say that you contact the adjoining landowners, and no one replies.
Right.
Then I think the only one that has an intent and has made-
The effort.
The effort is Mrs. Burton. I say-
She has to put a bid in.
Well, even if she doesn't, it could still be up for sale.
She wouldn't have to. I mean, there's no law forcing her to bid. She's come and asked us if they could change their mind, correct?
And if they didn't, there's no discussion of whether she would automatically inherit.
Let's just cross that bridge when we come to it.
I'm just, I guess I'm thinking for them because they run the risk if they bid a thousand dollars and somebody bids a thousand and one.
They'll lose it.
Yeah, then they'll lose it. But if they bid two thousand dollars and nobody else bids on it, then they're stuck at that price, which would be more than what they would hope to pay for.
And my question was along the same lines. If they, if they do not bid anything and we get no bids, can we reach out to the Burton's?
And they say, we'll give you fifty bucks.
And if, if that's, that's the case, then we've negotiated price subsequent to that, in my opinion.
Right.
But I think they have a figure in mind.
I assume they do also, and she was-
But see, that's the unfair thing of dealing with this stuff in public. Anybody watching this video certainly knows what the minimum bid's going to be, as it should be, but it puts this person in a weak position, exactly what you were talking about.
Because I can see what they paid for some of those other lots individually out here, and I-
Well, some of them, we were bidding against someone else. The one lots-
Are you going to any numbers on this?
Some lots in block five, some improvements of bringing in dirt had been done, and that was, we're using that dirt.
So, Ms. Meredith, are you on target back there? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. We'll be in touch with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jackie, thank you for your help. Next item of business, consideration of leasing office space for the public health department.
You want me to come up there?
Uh, you may. Uh, I will-
Okay.
Aw, jeez.
Welcome. I would move that we enter into a contract with Pat Bailey to lease sweets two-
Four and five.
Four and five on Hermit Road.
What's that called, anyway?
Ten, Hermit Road. Number four and five. It's actually number five is the actual address. Number 4 and 5. It's actually, number 5 is the actual address.
Number 4 and 5.
Number 4 and 5 is what we're leasing.
Two suites, but the address is...
But the address is number 5.
10 and 5.
It's been moved and seconded to lease suites 4 and 5 at number 5 Hermit Lane, also known as Pat Bailey's Building, formerly probably known commonly as the Suites that...
Creston Graphics.
For the sum of what?
The contract is $1,000 per month.
Effective June 1.
Effective June 1.
Thousand, one thousand.
I mean, I, the motion was to enter into the contract. We have a copy of the contract, Discussion? Yes, sir.
As far as the financing for this, it's not budgeted, obviously, although we are paying rent, debt, the clinic, so, and at the same rate, so moving this over here. But there will be an expense to fix up the interior for you to be able to use. I've been there, and it needs quite a bit of work. And I commend you. I hear you're working on weekends and stuff, and I love you for that, but... I'm not going, that's not my question, but my question is, the cost of the things that need to be done, am I under the understanding that you have a grant that's gonna be able to do that? That it's not gonna come out of the county coffers at this point?
Correct. Some of it is gonna be covered by grant money, and some of it's gonna be covered by extra money that we have from vaccines that we, that we've received that we didn't budget because we've gotten more than what we expected.
Okay. Hold on just a second. Hold on. Ladies, understand you're conducting a little business. One of two choices, either conduct it in the hall or conduct it very quietly. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, so, just, just for the record and for my own comfort, these aren't restricted funds that you can use for this type of thing.
Correct.
That's wonderful.
And I've actually verified that with the grant, that it's available, yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Does, just quick, because I haven't read this, does there any, like, water, anything come with the lease?
Everything comes with it.
Electric?
Electric. All utilities, snow removal, trash removal.
And the majority being insurance, too.
And he is...
So what does the majority mean?
On the building, the only liability that Connie would have is if they were negligent and started fire or something.
Correct.
Okay.
And it still would only be our contents. It's, his insurance still covers the buildings.
And it also, if you haven't read it, it also covers internet, but I think we're probably gonna have a recommendation from Ms. Live and Good to provide her own internet service for more reliability and service. But it does, the contract does call for that, so let me go through that.
Right, that's available.
Yes.
It is, yeah. The only concern I have with that is, well, I have two concerns with that. First of all, if it goes down, then it's like, we're at his mercy to get it fixed, essentially. The other thing is, I'm not sure exactly how much, well, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for, privacy we have with that, you know? Security. I don't know how secure it is, so... And we do have some type of information that goes through our internet system, so...
Well, I know Burns got a pretty good system going, beaming the signal.
He does, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Clint, I read it. Obviously, you read it. Are you okay with it?
Yeah, it looked okay to me.
It's pretty thorough.
So a couple of things that are gonna probably dovetail into this, signage being the one. Do you believe you have the funds to cover at least the initial sign?
I do.
On the building? And then...
Do they have a board for the rest of the business in Romanica?
There is like a board out kind of by the highway, so we can put...
I thought you meant a board.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
There is, yeah, out by the highway in that kind of, you know, it says like Cliffs Veterinary, the Forest Service, and Solar, whatever, San Diego's best.
There's an existing signed frame above the two suites that we're considering leasing, yeah. So then, if we're talking about expending your budget dollars on that, what would you anticipate the labor costs are gonna be for these improvements to those suites? We're gonna have to pay somebody to do that.
Well, I hadn't planned on it. I planned on you and I doing it.
Is lunch and a beer okay with you?
As a non-drinker, I'll take the beer or the lunch. I was hoping that you had changed your mind about that, but this is where I'm headed. Certainly, you have my pledge to help you to do that. I'm going to swivel my chair and ask both commissioners if they'd consider picking a date when we could take one day and work on donating some labor to help with that.
I absolutely agree with that, but I would also, are we, are we debating a motion right now?
Uh, we are.
Okay. And then I'm not gonna see what I was gonna say.
The motion is to enter into the contract.
I understand.
But I'd rabbit trail the...
Understand, and I would be rabbit trailing even further.
Yeah, I thought that's probably where you were headed, so, okay. Yeah, and I, I will do too.
And then I'm gonna make a suggestion.
Well, take it. Further discussion on the motion before the group, which is to enter into the lease as provided by...
One question.
Mr. Bailey.
What if they don't let us out of the lease at the clinic? And are we gonna overlap it?
Again, probably another conversation, not relevant to this contract, but it's certainly relevant to the big picture.
Sort of is relevant, because if we start paying on this...
That would be a legal issue. I'd rather address it in executive session, explain how we would handle that.
Okay. Because I don't want to pick twice.
Further discussion, public comment. Will proceed to vote. All in favor of entering into a contract with Mr. Bailey on number 5 Hermit Road, suites 4 and 5, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? Motion carries? So... Yes, sir.
I would like to move...
Yes?
That we allocate, if necessary, up to $5,000 out of the general fund to pay for contractor building, other necessities to make this suite acceptable for the county businesses.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to allocate up to $5,000 to offset costs of the move. Is that fair enough? Does it have to be contractor stuff, or?
No.
Okay.
To offset the cost of the move.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, so my question, I, I, we had some money freed up, sort of, and Silver Cliff decided not to spend their $3,000 for the Silver Cliff.
On West Cliff?
West Cliff. Is that general fund money?
That's why it's the general fund.
And so, why'd you pick 5?
I wanted to have, I don't know, I made that number up.
I can't imagine it costing 350 bucks to say it.
I mean, I don't think it's really fair. And this is just me speaking. I'm happy to come, roll my sleeves up and try and do my best, but I'm not very good at it, but I'll do my best. But I don't think it's fair for county employees to have to work on their, I mean, I know it's, it's been done many times in the county. I just don't think that's really appropriate. I think you have a job to do, you're a professional, that's a job you ought to do. You volunteer to do more, that's wonderful, but I don't think we should lean on you and say, "Hey, we're giving you a new space, go fix it up." That's, doesn't, doesn't seem appropriate to me.
Has that happened?
No, no, I volunteered 100%.
I understand that. You volunteered. But it may, they may, I mean, if we need to move, we talk about maybe moving some water from one place to another when I was there. I mean, that's a plumber involved. Someone has to pay the plumber, and I recognize you have money for this, but I, I don't know. I just feel that this is a county obligation to what, you know? If we need to offset something that you can have sufficient money to do. That's just my thought, and we could let the motion die if you want?
No, it's fine.
I just don't feel it's appropriate.
Thank you.
You're blunting it, man.
Is there any further discussion?
So I have $3,000 budgeted for this project at this point. And that's, we, we being Tom and I, measured out, looked at what it would might, you know, possibly cost us for flooring, paint, et cetera, et cetera. I've already gotten some things under that budget number, so, I mean, if you would be, if you want to give us $3,000 out of the general fund, we can do it for well under that, I promise.
The motion goes for 5.
Right, but, yeah.
Is this in addition to her 3? Are we relieving her of her 3 that she wants to spend on?
No, I think we use her money because it's available.
I just heard her.
And if we need to offset that to help with it.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Where I'm really going with this, I don't want to feel that the only way this is gonna get done...
Volunteer.
Is volunteers. If we need professionals to get it done, because you have more duties as a public health nurse to take care of instead of painting the wall, I want you to take care of your job and let, if we have to, well, let a painter to paint. That's just where I'm coming from. I'm concerned about doing it all volunteer.
I would like to suggest, with respect, and I'm gonna vote for your motion, by the way, might as well tell you that upfront, but I would like to pick Wednesday, May 15th, if you're available.
So let me grab my book.
I like playing poker with Tom. I'm gonna do this, too.
I'm bluffing on this.
I don't really have two, two queens.
Does it? 15th, Bill? Did you see where I'm heading?
15th, I'm out of town.
Every time we talk about the 15th, he's out of town.
15 through 18.
We know that. We got that, but...
This is what my schedule looks like.
Nice. How's the 15th?
And actually, the 15th is open. Can you believe it?
Well, I would just make a friendly recommendation that we block out the 15th. We've got to get some traction on this, so...
That's what I call Public Health.
Public Health. Yep, I'll do the same. We'll start at 11, quit at 2, have lunch for an hour and a half.
Can't do it on Tuesday, huh? Tuesday afternoon.
No, because we're gonna be in car in spring. Okay.
What time do you want to meet?
Um, 9:00. And then that gives us time to get some stuff done, so we can be very productive.
I'll dial in and do it on the conference call.
Make sure you have your painting clothes on.
I knew you were a team player. That's right. You know what? Let's do that, and we'll have you on the phone the entire six hours.
Six hours.
Okay, we good there?
Yeah.
Further discussion, public comment? Or did we vote on the contract? We did vote on the contract.
Yeah, on the contract.
You're on the $5,000.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. Further discussion on the county earmarking up to $5,000 to assist in this transition?
So this would be for like, if we wanted to hire somebody to put the flooring in and whatever? It'd be tremendously helpful.
I'm assuming you're comfortable that there is money available?
If we don't have $5,000 general fund, this county's in serious trouble. We know we have 3.
Is that on the record?
That is on the record.
Okay. Public comment? All in favor of allocating up to $5,000 for the transition project, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post nay? I thought you guys were gonna vote for your motion.
So will that be on like a voucher?
Uh, depending on where it's at, I mean, what the expense is, yeah. Certainly under the bid, it would, I mean, rephrase that. I would assume it would be under the county bid thing because not one person is gonna consume all $5,000, so... If we had to go hire somebody to lay the flooring for a couple grand...
Eight thousand.
While we're on the subject, if you do anything from Valley Ace, it's job 9.
Yes. And we're gonna stick with that. Now, job 9 is specifically for public health, or is that mainly in the county?
No, but it's gonna be within that, that budget line, and then from our side of it...
We'll have to sort it out after that.
We do it on our side, yeah.
Because they will set up another job number for us if we want.
You could just...
I didn't talk to Donna about it, but that's what she said to you.
Public health is put PH on it.
Well, it's what we talked about, just when you sign your name, put PH on the end and then...
Sign it, so that we...
Or let no, Donna know that Valley Ace is willing to assign another number, but either one, it doesn't matter to me.
So basically, that up to $5,000 would be used after you've done the funds of the $3,000.
If yours, if your money doesn't cover it, we're gonna step in and cover you.
All right. Other than what Commissioner Tanda inquired about, which we will let the process move forward because we're waiting for a response from his letter, anything else pertaining to this? If not, thank you very much.
Gold-laced curtains.
Well, I have a suspicion if they're laced with gold, it'd be because she bought the thread. Thank you. Appreciate it. And the contract counsel, you're all right with us signing that today?
Yes, I am.
All righty.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do have one quick question.
Yes.
Do we, do I need to get bids for everything then, as far as like flooring and...
Not if it's under the county's bid specs, no.
Which is the 8,000?
No, it's 5.
5, okay, yeah, we won't be over that then.
Each individual subcontractor, under 5.
I would guess...
Do you want me to call Jeff?
Job 1 is, certainly could reach out to Jeff, and I think the flooring probably is top of the list, other than the obvious stuff we're gonna change.
Yeah. Do you want me to have Hick come on the 15th, or do you want me to have that dialed in before the 15th?
Let's do it before. It'd be great to have the flooring on the 15th.
So we can actually put the flooring in?
Yes, that's what I'm hoping, but if we can't, then we'll do it later.
I'll call him now and see if we can get him on this afternoon.
Thank you. Ms. Meredith, there's a copy of the lease contract. Next item of business, consideration of request to DOLA for broadband funds. Mr. Bogal, how are you?
Charles can't get over getting beat up every day.
Nice to have you here.
I'm here to support the discussion.
Hey, would you like to come forward? You're more than welcome.
I mean, that gets me closer in range.
That's right. Within striking distance.
What's your pen say?
He's got a bulletproof vest on.
Yeah, that's right. Looks like a down vest, but we know better.
You guys remember, I did fly for gunships.
That's true, that's true. And I'm sure everybody knows this.
Are you the gunner or the...
No, I was the aircraft commander.
Ah, is that right? Gunship or something else?
I've always wanted to say this to you. And you have a picture in the Wall of Fame in Tony's Pizza.
Yes.
What year was that, would you guess?
Oh, gosh, it was some, some years ago, probably my last command. It was probably about 25 years ago.
Good, so in the 80s, most likely, huh?
Yeah, because I retired in 94 after 30 years.
I would, by consent, gentlemen, just open the floor up for some general discussion. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, what are we doing?
So we've been in communication with Ms. Christie. It certainly does not...
Who we?
Uh, Ms. Meredith, has reached out to her. Uh, Ms. Meredith has reached out to her. Uh, we sent her a, no, we did not send a formal request, yet.
Do I need to just say?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so what I did was I asked Christie what type of information would be needed for a request like this because there's no process set forth. So I sent her an email. She asked if there was going to be a request coming, and I was like, this is not in any official capacity, but it was decided that the thirty thousand would be a request from DOLA. Um, and I asked what type of letter needed to be sent, the information, all of that. And then she sent another email detailing all of the things that we needed, which then included, at the end of that email, saying if for whatever reason the project would not continue, the county would be on the line for that thirty thousand that was requested from DOLA. So if that EDA grant didn't come through, and we already requested that thirty thousand from DOLA, then the county would have to pay that thirty thousand.
And there were some pretty explicit instructions.
Correct. Um, it, Christie didn't go back on her word, I just want to show that. She said that she would bring it up to her people and her higher-ups and ask, um, and advocate that the county would not have to be on the line for thirty thousand, but she didn't say word for word that we wouldn't. So I just want to make sure that she didn't, that it's known that she didn't go back on her word at all.
We do not know if we'd be on the line for, is that right?
If the project doesn't continue, or for whatever reason we don't get that grant, we would be.
We would be.
Correct.
That's what I want to know.
Comment about that, sir?
It's kind of those who have had the gold rule. I think, you know, not knowing anything else other than just what was said, that, um, it appears that DOLA's trained to be accommodating to us, um, and I don't know whether they know, I, after the last meeting, I sent you a suggestion. Basically, realizing that none of us want to get into a situation where we might feel like we need to go to DOLA more than once to, uh, obtain some amount of money, uh, I suggested that since we're still working to get estimates for the two remaining tasks, that we basically wait until those two tasks are identified and estimated, and then make a complete disclosure and request to DOLA for whatever that falls out.
You sent that to them?
And I think we all three got that.
No, he didn't.
You didn't?
I just sent it to you.
Oh, I sent it on to you guys?
He didn't, he just sent it to you or something.
Yeah, I mean, we do have it, I'm not sure, I couldn't remember if I sent it on. So, Charles, here's the thing, from me. I truly kind of did believe all along that DOLA was willing to risk thirty grand from the very beginning of that conversation. So I thought, well, if they're willing to risk it, who, you know, who am I to stand in the way of that? If they're not willing to risk that, to me, then that opens up a whole nother can of worms.
Well, the, the, I guess the question comes down is the likelihood of approval of the EDA grant. I had occasion last, what was it, Thursday, uh, with the SCAD meeting, Trent Thompson was there. In the general discussions, there was more discussions relating to his coordination with us in that grant, and then offline, he reiterated, I told him, I said, you know, we're on a kind of an open schedule right now, and, um, I said, I can't tell you when, uh, we would satisfy the, the open requirements to, uh, to make the grant application complete. The discussion was, you know, they do meet monthly, and the, the risk that we might have, and I initiated this part, was that the closer we get to the end of the fiscal year, there'd be other obligations or other determinations on the part of EDA, and there might not be any money. And he indicated that, well, as it comes to the end of the year, yes, there, it certainly diminishes their budget for grants, but there's also the possibility from other areas that might not have commitments, uh, that they could reallocate money to, to Colorado, basically, and cover ours. Or in the worst-case scenario, at least we would be in a approved status, and it would be rolled over into the new fiscal year. Trent has been, uh, consistent in encouraging us that, uh, the, the grant would be approved, but then again, he's not on that board that makes the final decision. But, you know, considering what his job is, is to prepare the grants so that they will be approved, I think we have his confidence that, uh, that we're proceeding along the way, that if we satisfy these four criteria, that we would get favorable consideration. But, you know, we know nothing's positive. Or no, nothing is guaranteed.
There you go. I hear you. One issue I would have with it, and I, the logic is there, I have to agree with you. Charles, it'd be nice to ask DOLA once for the chunk, but let's suppose we did. Let's, let's say if they find out it's another fifty thousand bucks worth of fixing, or whatever. And the more we borrow, the more, uh, we lose at the other end, but if it fell through, see, we still don't know we're going to get through the landowners yet, we don't have the contracts. Something could cause this to stop, and in which case we'd be hung out for not thirty thousand, but ninety thousand or a hundred and ninety, who knows? So I have a little bit of a problem.
I don't understand how you're projecting those kind of numbers.
You just told us you want to go back from one request with DOLA for how much?
I don't know that yet, because...
That's my point. So if you do know it, it could be more than thirty thousand dollars.
The, the, and it was not elaborated or explained in our last meeting. The number that Dale provided, uh, or spoke that was not noted in the previous meeting was, the intent was, that was a number, to the best of our knowledge, that gave the, a cushion, and with the understanding that if, if in fact we went, say, for lack of discussion, for fifty thousand dollars and didn't use all of it, that it wouldn't be necessary to take the fifty. We could draw against that, but still give a cushion and give us the protection that we don't think...
Right, that's what I said. That's, that's what I said, Charles. Now, where I'm going with it is, you just stated that you're in your discussions with Trent, we don't know exactly everything yet, it could be more than the margin. Why are we waiting? If you know that that's it, why aren't we just making a request for the fifty then? You're using logic that says we're going to wait for, for Trent to give us more information.
No, I didn't. We owe Trent four proposals, four proposals. We can't do it because we're going to have to work, by EDA's dictate and instructions, they have to be done by professional sources. That's where we come back the money. So Trent's waiting for us to, to respond or not. And, uh, so we're not waiting anything else from Trent. The, my perspective is that it's between the collective us and DOLA, uh, first us and then DOLA. We produce products, and we submit it to, to EDA through Trent, and then he puts us on the calendar for, for the grant request.
So as I sort through it and understand it, you're recommending maybe to us that we wait, we get some hard dollars from whoever.
Yep.
And then we go back to the drawing board and say, okay, we need, let's just pull an example out. We need thirty, we need forty thousand.
Whatever.
Whatever. And then the discussion starts over again. Is that kind of what you were professing, suggesting to the board? Let's get the dollars?
I think, you know, none of us are comfortable to the fact that we don't know what the additional two proposals will cost.
Okay, so that, what Tom just brought up, what you're really doing is you came back asking us to reconsider the decision we made last week, or last time, really is what it is.
Yes.
Has nothing, I mean, there's nothing new?
No, there is new.
What's new?
That's DOLA probably.
That we're going to have to repay DOLA.
Right, oh, that's, that, I'm sorry, that's right, that's new, we're on the hook for more now.
Now, and so in all fairness, and so we're above board, when I requested this item of business put on here to reconsideration, a reconsideration of request to DOLA, that was prior to the email I got from you. I believe we need to reconsider the motion we made on April thirtieth in light of the fact that Christie said no guarantees, she never did say that, but she kind of intimated that maybe we'd be okay. But given this new information, that if the EDA doesn't give you the grant, you're most likely going to be on the hook for whatever money we front you out of the million dollars.
And what, what you haven't seen, Charles, was, she said you didn't see the letter that Meredith read. She's very detailed, this, this is like a new proposal in order to get them to approve spending them, pre-spending it. I mean, that's how I read the...
I think that's what I understood. It's in addition to the one million.
Right, a matchless grant, is how she referred to it, but nonetheless, go ahead.
I think we have an alternative.
Okay.
If, considering the work that we will have done to satisfy the EDA requirements in total, and if it goes to their Board of Review, whatever they call it, and they turn it down, then we've accumulated, I think, much of the paperwork that we would need to support a USDA grant. And I would consider that, that that effectively is the only alternative that I see right now, is that, uh, and it's...
An alternative to?
The, the matching fund set requirement that, that DOLA has got.
Oh, okay, to go to E, to go to the USDA.
Yeah, because, because DOLA didn't care where we get the money.
Right, go ahead, sir.
Kind of a point of order, and I'm not making this as a motion at the moment, but I think I'd really like to, I'd really like to see us retract, rescind what we did last time, and just get that off the table. And then let's start the conversation anew. So...
It's in order, yes.
I would like to move that we rescind the authorization that we gave at the last meeting to request thirty thousand dollars from DOLA at this time.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
I'm moving second to rescind the motion of the April thirtieth meeting, uh, that the commissioners voted to request a thirty thousand dollar grant from Department of Local Affairs. Discussion? I concur with you, sir, that's exactly where I thought it was, that's where we had to get, so we were just sorting through the mileage. Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, the motion of April thirtieth, ma'am, has been rescinded.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So, I, I want to throw something out. I'm going to take the worst-case scenario. That we do not get this EDA grant. DOLA goes away.
Now, go ahead.
The million-dollar grant from DOLA was tied to the awarding of the million-dollar grant from EDA.
It was tied to the accomplishment of a matching fund, did not necessarily indicate EDA.
Got you, yeah. Put that here, because right now, EDA's the only option we have that we're exploring. So that's why I said EDA. Uh, yeah, if we come up with another million dollars from the Charles Bogel Foundation, then we're back in the game, but...
If I win Publishers Clearinghouse, then this all, these problems go away.
I, right now, and I know we haven't done it, I'm just laying out some thoughts, because we just rescinded the motion. If we went to DOLA at some point, requested money, and we were at risk of not getting the EDA money, then we would be at risk of DOLA calling back that money. So, here's what I'm thinking. Would your company be willing to assume half of the risk if the county was willing to assume half the risk? Of whatever that dollar figure is, it doesn't matter, if things go south.
Somehow I figured that you would come up with that question. I would assume that you all understand the, uh, the financial status of, of our Economic Development Corporation. I'll put it this way, we would certainly aid the county in recovering of those funds, however that might be.
Well-stated, sir, because you might say, I'm, here's fifteen thousand, I understand it didn't come from my company, but that's...
Or they could say it's our labor legal unit of brand.
Whatever, but...
That's subject to negotiations.
Yeah, exactly. Go ahead.
I need to say this, last night I didn't sleep well because...
You and me both.
And I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to tell you why. I have debated in my mind over and over and over, and the reason I didn't sleep well last night is because I knew today was the day that we have to make a decision. My problem is this. We just finished, or we're in the process of finishing a prosperity plan. Over five hundred people responded to that plan, which I think is incredible in this community, or maybe any community our size. They gave us our priorities, I printed us that page. The priorities of our business, because that attracts retention, number one. Number two, infrastructure, housing, communications, Wi-Fi, cell service, broadband, and on and on and on. Three was tourism.
Three was tourism. I'm sorry, I just...
And I would state, I'm not sure that that was in any particular order.
I agree with you, I agree. I read them as the order they were listed.
Because on the various graphs, they've changed.
I take my job as representing the people of this county extremely important. I mean, what I personally feel, personally, I feel like you tell you, oh, to go to hell. You have a lousy business plan, you don't have the money, I've been insulted multiple times. That's what my heart tells me. However, my heart makes no difference in this, okay? I represent the county. The county made it very clear to me, this is what they want. They support this project because the county supports this project. I would, I would like to say is, I have no money budgeted for this project, not one penny. The promise was there would be no county money involved in this. I, I grant that, okay? And I'm trying in my, my heart and my mind, and why I didn't sleep well, trying to figure out how do I reconcile with the county wants with my fiduciary responsibility for the tax dollars that I'm in charge of? This is an issue for me, and this is very difficult. So here's where I am. I support the project. I'm going to tell you that. I support broadband because that's what my constituency wants, and I want to deliver it. I've been misled in terms of the liability on the county. Now, I grant you thirty thousand dollars in a two-million-dollar project that the county may be on the hook for, or maybe fifty thousand, whatever the number is, it's, it's not, it's not going to bankrupt the county, whatever we do. But we don't have it budgeted. So, like at four thirty this morning, I finally said to myself, the other way you really could do this is support the project, but do it with a budget line item. I would like to see this back on the budget, discussed in October for a two thousand twenty project. And that way, the county has budgeted, the county knows what's going on, we don't have to figure out where we're going to find the funds, you'll have better numbers, and if, if DOLA says we're off the table, we'll reapply. If the EDA says we don't have the money left, we'll find it somewhere else if it's available. But I, I have a very, very hard time personally, an unbudgeted amount of money, putting it at risk, even though I grant you, it probably is a low risk, I, I grant you that, but I owe this to the county that we pursue this because they told us that's what they want. So I am not willing to scrap the project, but I'm also not willing to spend county dollars that we don't have not budgeted to this project. So my feeling is, I would like to see this project back on the table for two thousand twenty with a budget item, line item during our budget process in two thousand nineteen. And I cannot reconcile this any other way in my mind. That's just my opinion, and I'll go along with what my commissioner...
I, I think, to amplify, our community assessment a year ago, basically came up with the same situation. So it's not just one study in one group. The, you know, the only complication I can see is we've asked for a, a year extension with DOLA.
That ends in March, correct?
Yeah. So with the new fiscal year and such like that, um, you know, I think that would be more than adequate time to, uh, complete the tasks that we're looking at right now. In fact, Dale's got a meeting with some folks in Canyon City tomorrow to support the environmental study. We've identified some potential sources for the last one, but I agree with that philosophy and, and would certainly support it. And it's, um, uh, everything, the discussions that we've had with Trent, um, you know, their schedule, uh, I mean, like, just like he said, he says, you know, I told him, I said, right, as of, what was it, Thursday of last week? I said, I don't know what our schedule is, and he certainly was encouraging that, you know, we needed to satisfy the criteria and that they could put it in. And, and I think there's another perspective. When we started this broadband improvement program, in informal discussions with previous folks at state level and such like that, it was generally recognized that this was probably the third or fourth biggest, most important broadband program. the third or fourth biggest, most important broadband program in the state. And those ahead of us, so to speak, were, had, their initiative had been several years before us. So, you know, but the fact is that the support we were getting at the state, the support we got at Dola was indicative of, they believed that we would be successful here in Custer County. None of us know, as far as EDA goes, but the encouragement that we've received, such with Trent, is promising. And in the world of broadband and in Colorado, the...
Go ahead.
Yeah, the point is that, for as the county as we are, this was recognized as a significant initiative, and in all truthfulness, folks in Denver want us to be successful. They have done what they can as far as discussions and open up the communications between Dola and EDA, but again, we've got to let the system go. But I would certainly support Commissioner Prince's idea of putting it, you know, I mean, in the great scheme of things, that's not that far away.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to speak for Commissioner Camden myself, which gives you every right to say, "Hold on."
I'll have something else to say.
Left me out.
I'm not...
Yeah. Because, the reason I'm going to do that is because it's on the record. We said it publicly in a meeting, it was in the minutes, that we, in those early days, would support this, it didn't cost the county any money. Whether that was right or wrong, I don't want to debate that. I'm going to assume, our position hasn't changed tremendously there. That's why I have angst on this going on the lam for X number of dollars if, from Dola, if the project doesn't move forward. We'll take EDA out of it if the project doesn't move forward. I would assume that probably EDA, or Dola is going to say, "Well, this, we're not going to sit on this X number of dollars that we've granted you on this process that failed, not the project, but for an unlimited amount of time." So, sooner or later, if we don't get the money from EDA, Dola's going to want their money back. That's how I feel. I don't know, they're going to say, "We'll give you another two years and go try to find some more money." They might say, "We'll give you another three months to try to find out." I don't know that, but I'm just not comfortable going on the lam, taking 100% of the risk. That's where I'm at. If I had to vote today on the request going to Dola, I would vote no, because of the risk, not because of a disbelief in the project, not because of lack of effort. I'm just not willing to risk that money. Now, if, to Commissioner Prince's point, that's why I didn't throw your name in the hat, to approach it from a budgetary standpoint is reasonable, but it circumvents where Commissioner Camden and I started from. So, that would come down through the budget process. See, if we still believe the county has no business spending dollars, and you propose let's budget dollars for it, those are two different things. That's all I'm saying.
Can you respond to that?
Yes.
The new information that led me to this was the strategic plan for prosperity. That came out loud and clear, this is what the county wanted. That's why I'm thinking, I'm not opposed to putting money into this because that's what the county wants, provided we do it appropriately, and that's through the budgetary process. That's why my, because I was with you at the beginning, but when I went through this, and I know that you've had input also, the county really wants broadband, and this is where I've been struggling. This has really been difficult for me, much more difficult than a lot of things with a lot more money. This has been a problem for me.
If I knew that I was in a contract with an entity to take half of the risk, I'd press forward.
Okay, let me say a couple things. You guys have pretty good shit. I hear you, Jay, and I like the way you started out. These guys have had a lousy business plan, they have had a lousy way of managing it and going forward, which has caused risks to occur in my mind, okay? I hear you, what you're saying on the strategic plan, however, infrastructure's more than broadband. And when I said, "Not one dime," from my point of view, I'm looking at it from my constituents, and they're yours too, that come to you and say, "This road sucks." Or, you know, "I've got an issue with the water, and we were zoning, and we've got to go X, Y, and Z." There's bigger things that are bigger than this, and it's gotten even more so as time's gone on. From my point of view, the technology's changed, than when these guys started seven years ago, it was a lot different. In addition, there's more funds available for broadband on other things. There's a new program that we've talked about that the towns are going to get a big pipe grant study, et cetera. So, from my point of view, I, my position hasn't changed. I think, I'm surprised, to tell you the truth, that Dola, I have to hand it to Christie, is going to consider even advancing a grant. In fact, it's a grant without even going through the grant process, to go get us well, to go after other money from another agency. It just boggles my mind. There's a rule that says, "Here's what it is, you want a million bucks, fine. You've proved to me that you got it all handled, you know what you're going to go after." And then we hear that that's not quite true. You know, we've got, we haven't considered everything, the business plan wasn't there, we haven't got landowners on, we still got to go through hearings with the public. Our constituents are still going to bellyache. And so, to me, it's pretty clear, you know, the technology's there, I'm not for this one bit, whatever the amount is. And, you know, we were pretty strong about that publicly. And so, that's where I am today. You know, there's the risks that I've talked about outlined five or six of them. More money, by the way, Tom, than just the, just the other four dollars that could be at risk.
The other point I want to bring out is that this, let's, again, for sake of a number, it's 40 grand. You guys come to say, "It's 40 grand." Okay? How many bids was that? We just talked about the bid process, Alyssa. Who's going to select the winning bid? Is that you guys? Is that the county's responsibility?
We'll make recommendations, Joe, and we'll satisfy the three sources' capabilities, so...
I think we did talk about that a little bit. I'm not sure we fleshed that whole thing out, but...
That's a very good point, because we've just been talking about the process of doing business here. It's us that's doing the business.
So, right now, I think we're on solid ground today, that we are not going to request any money from Dola.
I would agree with that.
I mean, unless somebody brings a motion for it, that hasn't happened yet, but we've rescinded the motion that we did make to request money for them. I think we're in a holding pattern. At your suggestion, let's get some hard figures put together.
Let the process proceed.
And then go from there.
And I guess, too, in the discussion that Christie, is there a chance that the decision of one way or the other on the money, as far as repayment, is that have potential to be resolved or clarified?
Say that again, Tom.
Well, I think, from what I heard, that she said, "Right now, she doesn't know that if the EDA grant or any other grant didn't come through, wasn't approved, there's still a question of whether the county would be liable for whatever monies we asked for."
No, it's set. It's set that if...
She didn't say EDA. She said, "If the project..."
If the project doesn't continue.
If the project fails to continue, you can expect to repay...
At any stage.
Whatever it is. She didn't tie it to EDA, which I appreciate that distinction because it's where I've been going all along, but...
I mean, realizing there's, with this kind of money and what we've got, there are very few choices. We got into the EDA path, and apparently, talking around our cohorts in other counties, they've used EDA for other matters. I haven't identified an effort that has been on broadband that's been processed with EDA, because some of the discussions we've had with some of our cohorts is, nobody said, "Well, we either had worse or better experience with EDA."
I spoke to Trent, and I asked him about the grant. And as he said, you know, he said, "I can't make a promise." He said, "But," he said, "that is exactly what they want to give money for, is broadband in this structure. It's a federal overall theme, let's get broadband in the country as much as we can." So, he said, you know, with the, because my question really was to him, "How many more requirements are you going to ask us once we satisfy those? Are you going to keep coming back and back and back, and what's the final cost going to be?" And he said, "Probably that what you have is sufficient unless someone above him comes back and says, 'I want this.'" He said, "But he'd been doing it long enough to know that it's probably going to come." And he was, he seemed very encouraging to me that if we satisfied those requirements, that the EDA would grant us the money. He also said the money may not be available in the future, so...
Well, I think it's, and he's explained, as long as we've been discussing this with him, you know, as the fiscal year progresses, more and more of their available funds are allocated, and we could get to a situation near the end of the fiscal year where they just don't have the money. But if we're, if we've gone through the threshold and the decision committee has approved it, basically, you know, a worst-case scenario, short of, as long as it's approved, would be that they roll it over into a new fiscal year, and we'd be heavy on the list for funding at that stage.
That's quandary. Now, later, and like we've said before, I don't want to be a utility for the county. Constituents didn't hire us to do that.
You'd be landlord to the spaces.
Well, but we have to maintain the towers, Jay. And if we don't have the, if we don't have the, but we're maintaining it for them to have it. You could provide the service.
You know, we agreed way back when to get involved in this public-private partnership approach, but there's a lot of crap that's going on, and we have no clue from the end of that. I do want to say one other thing, and I mean this with all respect. I'm not thrilled with the business plan. We have been very adamant about being offended from time to time about this project. We've said that topic earlier. I'm not sure it's fair to say that they had a lousy business plan. I think that borders being offensive a little. Now, to say, "We don't like their business plan, you're lacking a business plan," I get that. I just don't want to end up doing the same thing that we've been critical of somebody saying something to us about.
Have you seen a business plan?
No. So, it's not lousy, it's lacking. If you tell me I'm doing a lousy job...
It's maybe semantics, but to me, it's when they come, have this plan, and they're going to have me as a, it could be an agency granting the money or us accepting it, if they haven't got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, then you send them back and give me the stuff we need to make sure that they've got it covered, like contracts with landowners, you know, or who are the landowners, we don't even know who they are. That should have been complete upfront, so we know what the risk that we're assuming as a guy that's going to put the money on the table, or in our case, the county on the table.
And I, again, I say this respectfully, I just don't want us to go down the same path of being offensive.
Right.
And that's semantic.
Good point.
I agree that I struggle with...
Yeah, I'm not going to...
Whatever, but that, you know, and I would expect you guys to call me on the carpet the same way. If I cross a line, most of the time it'd be because I'm loud, I've stopped something.
Sure.
I just, that's all I'm saying. That's it. I don't want to address whether it is or isn't a good or bad or whatever business plan, that's not the point. I also kind of look and say, "If Dola is willing to lay out a million dollars, who am I to say these guys have done a lousy job? They must have some faith." If EDA eventually lays out a million dollars, then my opinion, their business plan sure as hell doesn't matter, because I don't have $20,000.
That's what they're doing now, they're refining it, forcing their hand. I mean, we got to present what they need to make sure, do it.
You've been waiting to either ask a question or...
Well, do you want some input from the public, or not really, because there's not a motion?
We could wait for public comment, but, go ahead.
I have a couple things. When Christie was here, and I'm not saying she lied, she didn't, she may have been miss, she may have misspoken, but she did give you the impression that if you borrowed off the top of this and it didn't go through, you weren't on the hook. So, you guys made decisions based on that information.
Exactly.
When you guys said, when you guys took office and said, "No more money," that was because your constituents said, "No more money." No, regardless of 500 people saying they want broadband, and you have spent more money because there was like a $9,000 or something.
Which was budgeted.
Doesn't matter what you spent.
Well, I mean, talking about nits.
Then, when Jay says, "Let's go through the budget process," I've sat through budgets. That's all well and good, but coming up with 30, you know, $30,000 or $40,000, let's be real.
We need to pick over 100 or 1,000 bucks.
The other assumption that is being made is that this tower project is the only way that we're going to get broadband in this valley and with, in this valley, in this county. And with technology, what it's racing ahead, I think that that's a bad assumption. That is what the CCEDC has assured us, that none of those things are going to work, but I'm not sure that I believe that. So, that's all I got to say.
Would you stand to question, sir? And if you care enough to answer, just tell me that. Do you still feel today that the tower project is our best bet today of getting broadband to the stated objectives?
Yes. And to complement that, and across my computer daily, I get a lot of news releases from the Nationwide and stuff, and one of the things that talks about the low-altitude satellites and such like that, one comment that I keep seeing is, "Nobody has figured out how that is going to be, make any money." There's not a business model yet that, at least by some folks, say that that will in fact do. And, you know, part of the deal is the fact that there is more and more money coming through the system, through the various government agencies. The rules aren't getting any easier, and actually, at the state level, it's transitioned. We got basically the million dollars that is promised us is the, virtually the last of the middle mile program, so that program doesn't exist anymore, and it's reverted to the, as far as funding goes, it's to the high-cost fund and such, which takes governmental agencies and such out of it, it goes to the business world. So, it is a changing status, and I believe it's more a changing situation on the finances than it is on the technology, I guess, is what I'm saying.
What would you like us to do at this point? What do you think we should be doing? Maybe we're being shortsighted.
Well, I did make my suggestion. I think to keep the relationship that we've all got with Dola, the responsible thing is to say, basically, collectively, Custer County's not...
No question.
Not currently ready to request a number as far as funding goes.
But what would you like us, I mean, where do we go from here? What do you think is the proper paths we should be down?
I think, and if, you know, assuming the ground rules don't change, I think the offer that Dola has made to us apparently is probably a livable situation. However, and I guess it's, I have more confidence that we will ultimately get money from, whether it's EDA or USDA. If you remember, six months ago... If you remember, six months ago, I had an invite and attended a meeting in Washington, DC, with USDA folks, and that were preparing to release their current program.
Which I believe is what this document's about, that's shared with these two guys.
And that's what I referred to a minute ago. The USDA has a program that's putting fiber in, and there's a lot of money. And they were looking at a big $10 million grant, the size, Custer County, the size of Custer County, and this fits the ticket perfectly. And that's a meeting we're gonna have as soon as we can with the Director of Colorado, to find out what that's all about.
I had met with her.
Before she was the Director for this?
No, no, since she's been Director.
Sally's whatever.
Yeah, and she's the one who got us, got me an appointment in Washington. It's interesting, apparently, the broadband people do not report to her. The USDA rep in Colorado Springs, which we've met with, does not, somehow does not report to her. And she told me, after my Washington meeting, that they, it was interesting, she did some research, and it's, since it's not under her organizational support, that, one of the things she questioned was, of all of the money that USDA talks about, that they have for various broadband initiatives, their actual percentage of award is relatively low compared to the total budgets that are available. So there's issues with all the programs, but.
If you answered it, I missed it, and I apologize if I did. If he was sitting in our chair, where would you go from here? What should we do?
Again, tell DOLA we're not ready. And again, you've got the approval loop, and when we come up with the cost for the four tasks, you've got an approval there. And it doesn't cost you any time for that amount of time, it costs CCEDC.
Oh, I know that. You guys are spending a lot of energy.
And, but we will continue to satisfy those requirements as far as trying to identify the cost. And this takes time. I mean, it's, I mean, any of us that have dealt with the federal government, or any of its agencies, realize that it's not a fast situation, right? And a lot of times, whether you're on a contractor standpoint, which we kinda are in this case.
Just look what happened to EDA with you guys.
Well, I mean, part of the delay was Trent's meeting.
Guy gets sick, nobody picks up the ball, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. It's not something that, if we were running that, that we would expect. I mean, for them not even to tell us what happened to Trent.
Right.
And he was just gone, you know? So my suggestion is, is buy some time and have rewards.
Get your numbers to come in, then.
Okay, so we're in a holding pattern.
Thank you.
We will communicate with DOLA, what we decided, what we decided and what we decided not to do. All right, sir.
And we'll let you know as things progress.
Thank you. I know you had to wait a long time, but thank you.
Thank you. You love it here.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think we just have one more item of new business, and then I think a couple other things we need to knock over the fence before we adjourn today. Consideration of changing the October budget hearing schedule, I think I sent a request to both of you.
Yeah, you said it goes back to what it was, or something?
Yeah, I mean, historically, it's a week earlier than, I would move that we change our budget hearing from October 8th through 11th, to the new date of October 15th through the 18th. Thank you. It moved to second, and change budget hearing discussion. I spoke with Donna at some length about the change. She said, yeah, when I actually look at it, I'm a little surprised, because normally, I'm grabbing my calendar here real quick.
Tell me those dates again.
October 15th through the 18th, Tuesday through Friday.
But from?
From 8 to 11. So just exactly a week later.
8 to 11 to 15.
15th day. Yes. Let me get that calendar up here real quick. She said, historically, those budget hearings usually started the week of Columbus Day or the week after. Right now, it's scheduled the week before. So we're scheduled 9, 8 through.
I just moved it down to the, it wasn't.
Okay, it was there. Okay, all right, okay. So it was 8 to 11, it is on my calendar now. I'm proposing 11 through 15.
15 to 18.
Oh, 15 to 18, sorry. I looked at, any big, do you guys see any big conflicts right now?
So it's the new date, Tom said.
15 to 18.
No.
I looked on my calendar, I didn't have it, because it's quite a ways down the way. Your 11 through, or 8 through was kinda, look at that, upper arc, and, see, I didn't think about the conflicts that we were gonna encounter if we leave it where we're at. Certainly, upper arc's one, right?
If you left words, there was a tourism board, upper arc, another upper arc, early childhood development, and our executive lunch.
So I'm concerned mostly, me, about the upper arc conflict. But that's not why I made the request.
No, this is fine.
But I just now looked.
Makes sense.
Oh.
I think we should change Columbus Day to Native American Day. All right.
And you want needless changes too, so don't start with it.
I think.
Picking on you, picking on you. Some people are easy to pick on. Discussion, further discussion about that, gentlemen. Donna was okay with it, that was the first place I went, because I thought.
I was gonna ask if Donna has no issue.
I'm okay with it.
Fine.
And do we need to bring, you know what?
Yeah.
And if we don't, will you?
No.
Further discussion, Harry Dunn will proceed. Public comment. Harry Dunn will proceed to vote on favor of changing the budget hearings to October 15th through the 18th. Say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. We will move the budget hearings. Thank you. Public comment, we'll get to Mr. Cannon here in just a second, but if you have public comment.
Thank you, Herb.
Let's see.
You're welcome. With that, Commissioner Cannon, for your.
Okay, yeah, I meant to bring this up earlier, and I was gonna, then I put it on my note to remind us here.
Not remind us.
Or to tell us, actually, that CenturyLink had to cancel our meeting today. They just sent me an email. Kunkelman did. And the reason he did is because they had, I'm just reading his note right now, they had been too busy working the broadband grant, and got behind the broadband grant, the CAF thing that they're going for. And he says, he says, he doesn't have enough info without having done that to make the meeting more fruitful when he comes here. So he's asking us to move it a couple weeks. He suggested 6 and 7, but I think we're all busy.
What was the date of that email?
It was two days ago. And that was my fault, I didn't get a chance to put it in here.
That was the meeting we're supposed to have in 50 minutes, yeah, right?
It's the one that was gonna be in 15, 15 minutes.
And when would he like to move it to?
This was Tuesday, I'm sorry. So, 6 and 7.
Last Thursday?
Yeah, it was.
Week ago.
Yeah, almost, not quite. So 6 or 7, or we can pick a date.
You're talking about June 6.
I think the later we make it, in June, yeah, it's in June, like a week past that. What are we doing on the 6th or 7th? We got BOCC meeting.
6 and 7 in June.
We got BOCC both days in the beginning of that week. I'm not going to.
He said, yeah, we are, or I am. So it'd be the week after then.
If we don't drag it out forever, I would say we could do it after the 6th or 7th, unless we, let me talk again, we'll go until 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
It's got buried. So I'm good.
I will be leaving town the afternoon of the 7th at some point, I don't know what time, but.
Of the.
Got a wedding and a loved one on the following day. I would assume you're gonna be at that wedding as well.
Possibly.
I think that's.
It's getting married.
If you don't mind me asking.
Late in May.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
But that doesn't mean I couldn't stick around for a couple of hours after our BOCC meeting, but traffic in Denver, I'd like to get a jump on it.
You wanna do it on the 6th? 6, you can, Trent.
If there are.
CCIs.
No, we have a BOCC meeting.
Oh, wait a minute, on the 6th is BOCC. I was looking at CCI for the three days. Yeah, we can do it then, why not?
Why don't we ask if they could do it at 2 o'clock on the 6th, would that make sense?
Sure. He threw out 6 and 7, so.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna write my book unless we reach out to him first.
Yeah, he proposed, I know.
Okay.
Call him back.
Do that update a while. So CDOT, about them, because they haven't been at the last two meetings.
No, no, I'll call them, I gotta call Pfeiffer anyway on that letter.
And maybe it's just not the timing for them to be involved yet, but we always talk like we're recording.
They need to be there, they've been sending a rep until that last meeting.
I've got two telephones back here telling me, what about Forest Service, are they gonna be part and parcel of that meeting?
Yes, all the invitees that have been coming.
I have near as much stinks about trying to choke down lunch in 40, 50 minutes, but I did a little bit ago.
Yeah, I wish I'd mentioned it.
So, oh, that's scratch. Definitely scratch today, no meeting.
We need to have a rest.
I have 2 o'clock. Anything else come before the board? Harry Dunn, Chair, will declare the meeting adjourned.
Yay.